Recording in progress.
Is that real?
Yeah, yeah, it's true.
And do I have to say that you've snow come in this bird?
I think you can defer.
Okay.
You guys want to?
I will guess that more.
I think we will because someone was joining by.
Recording in progress.
I like better.
This is great.
Okay, we're bringing this session of the Lewis Planning Commission to order. And the first order of business tonight is the minutes from the special November 12 meeting. Any comments? Corrections to the minutes?
I would make a motion to approve those minutes.
Any second?
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, unanimous?
I didn't take part in the votes outside us out there.
That's fine. Okay, our unfinished business item, first item is the overfall preserve, SB 2-24, for construction of 90 townhouses with amenities and site improvements.
Chairwoman Moser, before we proceed, could I make a motion about the rest of the agenda?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to defer new business C2 to our next meeting.
Unfinished business.
Yeah, unfinished business.
D2 should be considered.
Yeah, C2 is what I, that's the only one that I'm...
That's new business. I mean, yeah, sorry, unfinished.
Yes, what I said, unfinished business. Let me start again. I would like to make a motion to defer unfinished business item C2 to our next meeting, understanding that we have a long agenda this evening and also that many are in the audience for other issues on new business.
Okay, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I think that's unanimous. All right, anything else? Debra? Okay, thank you. Okay, so let's get to the big item tonight, which is the overfall preserve. Janelle, would you like to read your comments or your interpretation of our conditions?
That's just for something for you guys to consider if you'd like to make a motion based on your comments. So that's not really something, so this is just, again, the site plan for the overfall preserve townhouse development. And a public hearing was held. You held a special meeting to discuss additional information and to get more information from the public. The record was left open and then it was closed. All additional information was provided to the planning commission. So the only items that should be considered are the items that are in the record from the public meeting, the staff report, and then any additional information submitted from the public or the applicant.
Okay, I would like to look at condition number four. It was not my...
I think you've got a couple of items here. First, if you're going to follow proper procedure, Alex can yell at me, is do you want to make a motion about the entire thing or do you want to separate the waivers from the recommendation to mayor and council? You can do that because you've done that in the past. And then I would strongly suggest make a motion to be made and then you can discuss any potential conditions on an application. Alex, suggestions?
That works. Just as a starting point for the record, we have one commissioner online, one commissioner absent, and a new commissioner. Have you reviewed the record?
Yes, I have. I've looked online at all the videos that were posted by the city of the previous hearings.
Terry, please be careful to speak into the microphone so that our secretary can pick up the...
Does it work now?
Yes. Good. Thank you.
And Chairwoman Moser, I also would like to make a large motion. That's not a single condition motion. Would this be an appropriate time to do that?
I think you need to make the decision, do you want to consider the entire thing as one motion or do you want to separate out the waivers from the rest of the application?
I think we should separate the waivers from the rest of the application.
Okay, then do you want to deal with the recommendation to the mayor and council with potential conditions or the waivers first?
I think the conditions for the site plan.
Okay, and then somebody should make a motion stating all potential conditions and then discuss.
Okay, could someone make a motion?
Janelle, can you repeat that, please, so that...
So typically when you've held the public hearing, you've had your discussions, right now you're making a decision, which is what tonight is for, so you make a, you make a You have an option before you for consideration that somebody needs to state a motion for the reasonings and the potential conditions, and then you discuss that motion with potential conditions.
So the, so the motion would be to consider the conditions?
The motion would be to recommend approval, recommend denial, whatever you're thinking of doing to the mayor and city council regarding the overfall preserve subdivision, site plan application.
Okay.
Because then, once you get past a motion with potential conditions, then you can discuss that motion and those conditions that are proposed for a vote.
Okay, I would like to make a motion then that we, that we, well, actually, can I back up? I really just want to back up here. I'd like to ask, if possible, with the permission of the chair, that council lay out for us what the options are tonight for what we can, what we can accomplish either tonight or to postpone these, the final approval pending additional information and a possible additional public hearing on this. So I just want to know what our options are as a planning commission before we proceed here.
Are you asking council or the council? The council. That's what I thought.
Our council.
Our council.
S E L. C O U N S E L.
That's what I thought, but I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Chair. So obviously, we're here tonight for the overhaul, overfall plan. On the agenda, there's the option to make a recommendation to the council on this plan. That would be a straight approval, a straight denial, or a conditional approval. Those are the three options. And this is a site plan, so there's 120 days to make a decision. And so, to answer your question, you have the ability, if you need more time, you could hold a public hearing, but I think you could only do that if there's a reason you cannot make a decision tonight. You should try to make a decision tonight if possible. The public hearing was held in October, October 15th. After that, there was a meeting in November to discuss the possible recommendation. Obviously, there was no December meeting. And so at this point, you should try to make a decision tonight. If possible, we can expeditiously hold a public hearing to enter more information into the record. And the, the final, the drop dead date to make a decision is February 12th, which is 120 days after the public hearing.
Right.
So if I get you right, the motion has to be to either accept or deny at this point, and then we then go back and...
Or postpone.
Or postpone, and then we go back and look at the conditions? Is that what you're saying? So we have to say whether or not we propose a motion to either accept or pass it along or not to pass it along, is that right?
So as a starting point, you could have discussion on the application.
You can.
And discuss whether you're going to make a motion to approve, and that will help guide you, I think.
I would like to have some discussion.
Okay. I also agree with that. I'll hold off on my motion. Okay, what's the discussion?
So I'll kick it off. The, so, first of all, I just want to make the point that this is a highly important recommendation that we are going to make to mayor and city council. I really do feel that we have an obligation as, as the Lewis Planning Commission to give them very sound good advice going forward here. This is the gateway to our city with the cumulative impacts of this development on our city, looking at all the other developments that have already been approved by, by the county council that are impacting traffic on Savannah Road, on Kings Highway, and here you have one more development with an intersection right onto a major artery into our city, where we have a bike trail, where we have school, several, we have two schools, three schools, really, right there. It is, there is a lot at stake here. There is a lot affecting the character and quality of life of our city. I personally don't feel that we have the information that we need from Del Dot in order to make a decision on this tonight. I understand that there may be some further information from the person who was the liaison with the whole Kings Highway project that, that has been approved. And, and, and there are a number of conditions. This is, this is from the research that I have done and others, this is what I have concluded, is that we, that the planning commission, the advice that we can give to mayor and city council, is that they are not going to be able to deny this application if it is code compliant. But what they can do is they can impose a number of conditions in order to make this application responsive to the citizens of this community, that it, number one, be safe. That is, that's the paramount concern that we have, is that safety is, is taken into account here. And I'm not, I'm not convinced yet that safety is taken into account when you look at an intersection, that the way the developer would plan this right now and, and the way that, that Del Dot seems to have approved it, it would just, there would be an intersection that just goes right into, to this intersection with Savannah Road. And so I think that we need some more information, more time to consider this, perhaps one more public hearing, and then come back and finalize our recommendations to mayor and city council. I've drafted up some, some ideas on what we need to do. I think we need to lean on Del Dot to provide us with this information and work collaboratively with them. But I think there's a lot at stake here, and I think we need to get this one right. So that, so those are, those are my sentiments going into this. And I'm not saying I want to create a lot more work for us. I'm not looking forward to another public hearing. I'm not looking forward to having another meeting on this, but I do think that this is a uniquely important recommendation that this commission is going to make. So those are my, those are my feelings.
Yeah, I'd like to add a little bit to that. I think also that we're sort of at, the city's at an inflection point when it comes to how it's going to direct traffic, in particular between Kings Highway and Savannah Road. As we saw recently demonstrated in the new construction, when the construction popped up on Kings Highway, there were lines trying, try to find a way to get away from that, that backup, try, and so they, they used the shortcut. Right now, the shortcuts are DeVries or the high school, right? You could try to go up to West Coast, but there's a multi-light backup on West Coast going down the South, Southbound Route 1. And so they would try to find the biggest, most shortcut they could. And now we're creating another one, okay? We're creating another one that goes through a housing for families, right through their parking lot, into a parking lot for senior citizens, right, senior citizens home, including a memory care center, right, that we're going to ask traffic to go through. Thirty percent of the traffic generated from overfalls is supposed to go through those two developments, thirty percent, okay? And that, that doesn't even take into account the fact that whether or not overfalls is even there, that passage is going to be there, and those people are going to take a shortcut. So, you know, I took it upon myself to talk to the general manager at the lodge to find out what his sentiments were about this. Number one, he hadn't been contacted by the developer at all about the idea that they would be using thirty percent of the traffic through their developments. And number two, they have a, they have an agreement between, they have an agreement between, on my own, what?
As a citizen.
As a citizen. Okay. But they have an agreement between the...
Dutchmans?
Dutchmans, because it's from the same developer, okay? But he wasn't aware of the overfalls. And ironically enough, those barriers, those temporary barriers were put there because the, the general manager noticed there was a lot of traffic, truck traffic going through, through the Dutchmans Harvest, okay? And they approached Dutchmans Harvest and said, can you help us? We don't want trucks going through, through our parking lot. And they put, Dutchmans Harvest put those temporary barriers up. And that's just the tip of the iceberg. That is just the tip of the iceberg when it comes to cross-traffic here. So I really think we're at an inflection point that we need to consider.
Madam Chair, what the two gentlemen have said is consistent with a proposal that I want to put out to the committee. Having read the records...
Well, I think, I think right now we need to discuss what we're going to do rather than details of a solution or a recommendation.
Okay, I thought I was going in that direction.
But are we, are we going to proceed with, with discussion tonight or are we going to put this off until, and if we can get Del Dot to come and speak to us and review the issue?
I'd like to very much piggyback on what Kevin was discussing. My main concern, and I have a lot of points as to why, is exactly what is shared by Kevin and by Rich. The development does not have a safe entrance/exit or connectivity to a state or city roadway. And that is my concern, and we do...
The question being asked is, are you making a recommendation to deny or a recommendation to approve?
Pardon me, I'd like to get through this at first.
Or a public hearing? That is what the chair has asked.
Has, if, do I need, I'm not allowed to make comment before I make a motion?
Well, first we have to, first we have to decide what we're going to do.
I'll jump in, then.
The detail of, that you want to get into, we can, we can discuss, but first we have to decide.
Well, I was, I was going to hold off on this, but I will jump in. I would like to make a motion to deny, based on safety, as we are tasked with in Chapter 197.3. My reasoning for this motion is that the development does not have a safe entrance/exit, and I realize that I'm going to have to edit this and shorten it, but, and no connectivity to a state or city roadway. The lodge, I was going to say, cannot be considered as an option because we have no letter on file, and there is presently a road, there are road blockades, pipes there preventing the access. Now, we have learned one more point to that. But then I'm going to go into some detail of why this is more significant than we have even discussed before. Number one, as an ex-teacher...
So is this all part of the motion or...
Sure thing. I wanted to present this before. Can I offer my explanation now?
You just stated you were making a motion.
I am, and I'm explaining the rationale. I was trying to explain my rationale first and then make my motion, but I was cut off.
So typically, there's a motion proposed, and then there's an opportunity for second and then discussion, so if you wanted to discuss...
Before voting?
Yeah.
Okay, I would like to make a motion...
You just did.
To deny the application for overfall preserve based on a lack of interconnectivity and safe entrance and exit to any state or city highway. Do I have a second?
I hear no second.
Oh wait, it looks, looks like someone's on screen.
Oh.
She barely has a voice.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, she has laryngitis.
Mary Linda.
She might need the Bob Dylan style cards.
Okay, Mary Linda, I know you wanted to deny the application also.
Yes, I second the motion to deny the application.
Okay. Okay, now we have discussion.
Okay. The reasons, the additional reasons we haven't discussed yet. First off, going to Delaware School Code. Students walk, can walk up to a mile or a quarter a mile if they are special education. So we are going to have kids walking to school, to the high school and to the middle school and to the Lewis Elementary School. Number two, this is a higher density development to begin with. It is mid-rise buildings, not townhouses, not any of the development that we're really used to in this community. And also, the developer, Mr. Shell, went to mayor and city council and was granted higher density, increased number of units per building to basically make it feasible for it to be workforce housing, which can be verified with public record, and I'm sure, Janelle, that you recall that. So what is our exact number of units? I'm sorry to put you on the hot seat there. Ninety?
This application is 90 units.
No, 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 Dutchmans Harvest.
120.
140.
140 now, okay. So that is 140 units. We have to assume, this is workforce housing, there will be children of all ages living in there. You will have younger people coming and going at different times of day, and there is going to be foot traffic. In addition to that, there is no playground or other sort of engaging recreation there. So I think it's safe to assume that children will be on bikes and scooters and things like that. I do not believe that is a safe way to be cutting through, considering the density. And then number two point here is the lodge cannot even be considered as an option. There's no letter on file with us, and the roadway between Dutchmans Harvest and the lodge are blocked. It's now come to our attention that this permission has not been granted. Let me make sure I have got all of this. Further, I don't think conditioning this or trying to solve this problem for the applicant is our job. We should be presented with a plan that is safe for the city of Lewis residents and visitors. And given the amount of discussion over the traffic on Savannah Road, this is not cutting it. This is not safe, and I cannot endorse it. So I would ask my fellow commissioners to consider denying this motion with me on these grounds.
Can I say something?
Yes, please.
Thank you. So first, I'd like to say that I agree with everything that has been said so far by the three colleagues who spoke. As I reviewed the material, I came to the conclusion that we were not going to be able to resolve the issue of safety of the egress from, from these two communities since basically we are exiting in one common point, if we keep trying to ensure connectivity with Kings Highway. I feel that there would be, and first, I am very attached to the concept of connectivity. I see the advantages, but I think this particular development, overfalls preserve, is uniquely unsuited for connectivity with Kings Highway. For one thing, if we have connectivity with Kings Highway, right now, we are not able to know whether or not this will ever be achieved. We would need to overcome the reluctance of Del Dot, which has already indicated that they want the connectivity to be into one of the circles. One of the avenues for connectivity here is not onto one of the circles, is actually directly onto Kings Highway, which displeases Del Dot. Then there is the issue of the neighbors in the back of the property, none of which is interested in having traffic from overfalls or from other people, for that matter, going through their estates. And my concern is that if we keep trying to establish that connectivity with Kings Highway, we will not be able to focus on how to resolve the very serious issue that Richard raised first here, which is how do we ensure the safety of the interconnection between Dutchmans Avenue and Kings Highway? If we get rid of our desire to establish connectivity, we resolve a lot of problems at the same time. We avoid having parasitic traffic driving from Kings Highway through that community where there will be children to go onto Savannah Road. We also are able to get rid of the stub of Road C, which is not an inconsequential quantity of asphalt that is put down where we could have green grass and increase the, the quantity of green space into that community, into overfalls. And also, to establish the, the safety of the intersection, eventually the safety of the intersection with Savannah Road, for which we are going to need the cooperation of the developer, because we more than not are likely to need a sliver of land currently belonging to, to overfalls preserve. We are much more likely to obtain that cooperation if we get rid of that threat of having eventually a connection to the back of the property, which is going to be very inconvenient for the people who reside in these two communities, which is, which is also make it impossible to assess the level of traffic that we are going to have at the interconnection with Savannah Road and Dutchmans Avenue. We know from the meeting that took place two days ago at the city council that the city is getting ready to engage into an in-depth dialogue with Del Dot, or at least that's the objective, as I understood it, on the whole issue of the safety of that particular segment of Savannah Road. And initially, the city council was going to focus mostly on the segment in front of the brewery, but the brewery is within stone's throw of this intersection, and the bike trail, which intersect, is wedged between the brewery and between the exit onto Savannah Road. So I feel that if we want to, to move forward without ultimately being hit by the deadline and having to pass on to the city council a, a project which is going to be incomplete, basically failing in our job, we need to decide today that we are going to drop completely the, the hope of achieving connectivity in the back. If we do that, we have done a gigantic step forward, and we can start looking seriously at the safety at the front of the... and we can start looking seriously at the safety at the front of the property with the cooperation and Del Dot, and whoever in the city council will be entertaining these discussions. From the visit that I made this morning onsite again for probably the umpteenth time, I've almost come to the conclusion that the only way we are going to achieve safety there is by having a traffic light. But that's a, you know, that's not our authority. It's Del Dot. This is something that the city will take over. So I think we are all pretty much along the same wavelengths here. We just need to think a little bit differently. We cannot have everything. And there's something which, for me, is always very important when we look at this project, is to reduce the quantity of asphalt that is put on the ground. Here, it's a small piece, the stub of Road C, but I would be delighted if we could get rid of it and replace it with hedges or plants or whatever. An additional benefit, finally, and I will conclude on that, is if we eliminate connectivity, this community, overfalls preserve, will not be subject to any traffic external to the community itself, which means that the roads that are then proposed, instead of being maintained by the city, can now be maintained by the HOA, which is a financial benefit that is not negligible at a time when the city is tight with its budget and constantly looking for money to maintain the roads in other parts of the city. So I think we have all to gain by deciding today that we are not going to look for connectivity, and from there, we can move on and see where we can go further tonight on this issue before. And that's the reason why I didn't support the motion to deny, because I feel we can talk a little bit more before we reach that extreme conclusion. Thank you.
I would like to ask a question about Alex, about connectivity. It was my understanding that Lewis has required and voted for connectivity. Is that, it's in the code, correct?
That's correct. So 170-2, the purposes of the subdivision code mentions interconnectivity as a purpose of the zoning code and a purpose of the subdivision code. So certainly, it's an emphasis, yes.
Yes, and to which I would reply that we also have in the code the requirement for safety and welfare of the city. So here, we have two conflicting objectives, and I don't think that we are betraying the interests of the citizens of Lewis by at least evaluating what I'm suggesting. And I think at the city council, they will be able to sort it out. Ultimately, it will be up to the city council to decide if what is more important to them is to have connectivity or to have the project ultimately going forward with a safe exit.
Can I ask a question? First of all, the issue of connectivity is that that horse is sort of out of the barn a little bit, because no matter what, if overfalls is built or not, there's going to be a connection, as it stands now, okay? As the roads are, as the projections are, there will be an opportunity for traffic to go through both developments to the lodge and out, okay? It doesn't have anything really to do, that connectivity right now, unfortunately, unfortunately, I'm saying, is almost a done deal, okay? Unless somebody, something steps in. Now, the byway is commissioned. They've recommended, you know what? Redo this in order to get that straight access from King's Highway to Savannah Road, okay? And that would eliminate the need for folks to cut through the lodge, okay? And the affordable housing, okay? Work-class housing. But that's a, that's a, that's really nothing to do with overfalls, unfortunately, because that's really going to happen, no matter what happens, for our recommendation for this development, okay? The only way, but I'm curious, though, in the conditions for approval that were proposed as part of this staff, one of them was a traffic study. A traffic study, an in-depth traffic study of the area, and it goes into pretty great detail about what exactly we would look at. My couple, I have two questions about that. One would be, what ultimately will we do with the traffic study? And what would be able to, would we be able to use the result of the traffic study to apply it against this particular application? And either to deny or accept the application based on the findings of the traffic study, okay? It's not clear about what the recommendation would do, from a legal standpoint, quite frankly. And number two is whether or not that traffic study would include a look at that interconnectivity I talked about earlier, okay? The idea of the volume of traffic that goes between King's Highway and Savannah Road via the avenues we have now, and what this particular development would add to it as far as how many, for instance, how many vehicles per day can the lodge expect to see through its parking lot, okay? That's a big question. How many vehicles per day with this development or without this development, all right? How many vehicles per day, once the construction starts on King's Highway again? And that's going to go until, the city council meeting the other day said it's going to go to year 2032, I believe, right? Over the next seven years, how much volume of traffic is going to be trying to get from King's Highway to Savannah Road to get off that, those construction areas, right? What is the impact of those middle ground we have here, okay? And because this is, we're at that, when we talk about an inflection point, we are at that inflection point in the city to decide how we're going to run through traffic between King's Highway and Savannah Road. This is now, because this is the last opportunity we'll get.
Yeah.
And the byway is commissioned, is recommending that they redo this complete development, okay? And put that road to King's Highway. That's what the byways commission is saying. And they're asking us to recommend that as part of this approval, all right? But it's not clear in this document that staff created whether or not that kind of recommendation could come out of the traffic study, for instance.
But first, today, we're not really talking about the lodge, but you're right, the two things are connected. In terms of the connectivity for overfalls preserve, if we cut off, if we ask them to cut off the exits to both the lodge and to, at the end of Road C, that's the end of it. That property becomes an enclave, which is not something that I particularly like, in principle, but at least we've now isolated that community from parasitic traffic coming from King's Highway. There remains the issue that Deborah has raised, which is the connection between the lodge and the Dutchman's Harvest. Well, we know that the lodge doesn't want this, okay? And so it is very, it seems to me that it's not going to be that difficult to make sure that there is no connection between the lodge and Dutchman's Harvest. And then that's it. We have isolated these two communities. They have one exit. It's on Savannah Road, and we manage that exit, and it's not going to be the, you know, mission impossible. It's just basically probably sixty, seventy children and then two hundred and thirty houses. We are able to manage an exit of that flow of traffic onto Savannah Road, particularly if the city works with Del Dot to establish either a traffic light or some other method to ensure that the exit is smooth in all season, particularly in the summer.
I would just like to, following up, ask a question. I'm sorry to often put you on the hot seat, but is there deeded access from, for Dutchman's Harvest to be able to use the lodge as an entrance?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
It is recorded. There is a cross-access agreement between the Dutchman's Harvest and the lodge.
Who have connected development, but this property does not, correct?
This development only has access to Dutchman's Avenue.
Right, okay. And I would just like to stress again, you know, we're talking about possible solutions, but I really don't feel that it's our job to propose a solution to the applicant. I think that is the job of the applicant, to propose roadway solutions. There are empty, there is an empty adjacent parcel, but that's not our job to suggest that as an option. That's all. I feel like it's their job to figure it out and pay for it, but it's our job to say, this is not connectivity. This, while we say that this conforms to our code, if it doesn't adhere to our subdivision code purposes, is it truly adhering to our code?
I'd like to make a comment about connectivity. I think it's very important. And I think we need to also consider the fact that there is the vacant property to the northwest, I guess that is, which will someday develop. And so that Road C really needs to connect to there for there to be connectivity in this neighborhood. And, you know, the developer was confident that that road, that somehow the road system would connect to King's Highway through that other property, which may or may not happen, but there should be connectivity between that property and this property. So I think that Road C is essential for that. I think it should stay in the plan.
That other property cannot have its own access onto either King's Highway or, no, it would have to be King's Highway, right?
It probably, it probably will, but we need connectivity, though. Connectivity is a core belief of our comprehensive plan as well as our zoning. So we can't say, well, we're just going to ignore that for this one.
I am agreeing with you. I don't think that that C should be removed within the plan, but I don't see that it's our job to make any suggestions or conditions that exist outside of the acreage of the plan, of the site plan. I think that, I just don't feel that's our task, because there are too many unknown variables. We know that, because it was introduced by the applicant, that the parcel adjacent to the east of overfall preserve has had an application, or has filed an application for a change of zoning to, from agricultural to commercial. But we also know that there is a new county council now, and that we don't know that it will be granted. It could be yet another residential neighborhood back there. That might be an opportunity for them to connect. But all I'm looking at is what is presented us today, which is all I can look at. And it's not safe, and it doesn't have any connectivity.
Could I, let me just try to steer us back onto the question at hand. And that goes back to what council brought up originally. We have three options. One is on the table now, literally, and that is to deny. We could approve, or we could postpone, have another public hearing, and then make a decision on what we're going to forward on to city council. This is my view, is that by denying, which is by my reading of case law from the Supreme Court of Delaware, we are simply punting something to mayor and city council which is not going to hold up in court. And that is very, very clear from my reading of case law. And let me just digress for a quick moment and quote, and this was actually a memo that we got from council, but I had also read it at the same time. And this is quoting from DeFrancesco versus Mayor and Council of Elsmere. "When people purchase land zoned for a specific use, they are entitled to rely on the fact that they can implement that use provided the project complies with all the specific criteria found in the ordinance and subject to reasonable conditions with the planning commission may impose in order to minimize any adverse impact on nearby landowners and residents. To hold otherwise would subject a purchaser of land zoned for a specific use to the future whim or caprice of the commission by clothing it with the ability to impose ad hoc requirements on the use of land not specified anywhere in the ordinance. The result would be the imposition of uncertainty on all landowners respecting whether they can safely rely on the permitted uses conferred on their land under the zoning ordinances." Okay, so that's coming down from the Supreme Court of the state of Delaware. But they go on, they go on, and they say, don't take this, though, to mean that, that in this case, and it's a question as whether it applies to us, because we're a little bit of a different beast here, but they say, don't take that to mean planning commissions, that you don't have any authority. It goes on to say, "The dissent implies that our interpretation reduces the commission to conducting a mere compliance check of a subdivision application to verify conformity with the county code. This mischaracterizes the position of the Supreme Court. To summarize, the commission may condition its approval of Ashburn subdivision application based on non-code factors, such as agency recommendations, school capacity issues, concerns regarding health, safety, welfare of the community. The commission may consider these issues and has discretion in formulating conditions on approval designed to harmonize and coordinate regional planning." We have the ability to put conditions on this. If we are going to do a service to mayor and city council, simply denying, which feels good, it feels good to me. I would just like to say, this is a dog, let's get rid of it. But that doesn't do us any good, because it's simply not going to hold up in court. So what we can do is say, okay, let's put conditions on this thing that are going to improve this, materially improve it, make it safe, make it better for our community, and give that to mayor and city council to consider as they go forward. And I think we're well on the way to doing that. I think that the city planner has drafted some good conditions. I had a discussion with her earlier today. I think they are getting better. And I think that if we have one more hearing on this, that we will get even better recommendations, and then we can forward something very useful that the mayor and city council will be able to use as they fashion their final decision on this. So that is why I am not going to vote for denying, because I don't think that that is going to be useful. But I do think that we have a responsibility to act in a very responsible manner here and give them something useful.
I agree, Bruce. I think it's the right avenue is to look at the conditions, but I agree that what you said, from a legal standpoint, I think you're absolutely correct. I think our path is clear from a legal standpoint, quite frankly. But my question, though, goes to the conditions themselves, proposals themselves. So to what degree, what's the legality behind these conditions? So for instance, there's a condition that's proposed that the, this development and overfalls and the lodge and Dutchman's Harvest have an agreement, a written agreement, I suppose, a written agreement regarding the access, okay? What happens, my question is, what happens if they can't get that, okay? The other one is, okay, we have a traffic study proposed. What exactly is the end game on the traffic study, from a legal standpoint? If the traffic study comes back and says, whoa, this is going to be catastrophic or unsafe or whatever it may be, based on all the avenues we really want them to look at, what is the legal, from a legal standpoint, what happens then? That's my question.
Yeah, absolutely. Happy to help with that. So as the vice chair correctly said, in the term, the Supreme Court of Delaware uses this rubber stamp. The planning commission does not have a rubber stamp on a code compliant plan. You can attach reasonable conditions of approval, and when it comes to a traffic study, you have wide discretion, broad discretion to, the scope of the study, you have a lot of discretion to kind of craft. So you could address pedestrian safety, bicycle safety, vehicular safety. You could ask Del Dot to look at the need for a traffic signal, for instance. You have broad discretion as far as what the study is going to entail. That being said, Del Dot does play a role in what actually happens with the road. So you can ask Del Dot to look at an exact issue, and if they come back with a concern, you could ask Del Dot to address that concern. You can ask an applicant to help fund that improvement. So hopefully, that answered that question you have. You have the ability to attach conditions in practice that the applicant needs to comply with. So third parties, you don't have the ability to require a third party to comply necessarily. If they don't want to, that could be problematic. So you can require the applicant in good faith to try to enter into an agreement, but we can't compel neighboring. we can't compel neighboring properties to act.
Madam Chair, Mary Linda has a comment. We just see her from our vantage point.
Yes, Mary Linda.
Yes, I would like to go back to my reason for seconding the motion to denial, to deny. And that basically has to do with the fact that this proposed development does not provide connectivity except to two other, except through access roads to Dutchman's Harvest and the Lodge, and that they have their own issues with connectivity. And to my mind, connectivity is a safety issue. The plan is presented, has no connectivity, and that also is a requirement of code. That's why I said seconded the motion to deny. So maybe I'm wrong in my interpretation of connectivity, but if it's in code and the development doesn't have connectivity, then they're not in compliance. So that's where I'm coming from.
So, so since they are never going to be connectivity in, established in the next six months, a year, maybe two years or three years, that means that this property is going to stay in limbo for an extended period of time? Is that, is that how you basically view things?
Well, how is connectivity viewed, Janelle or Alex, from the standpoint of this property?
So typically through a development process, and you will see it throughout the county, throughout the state, throughout different states, is, think of it, a good example is the sidewalks to nowhere. In this instance, in example A, you get a sidewalk in front of your property because if you're going through the process, you have to put sidewalks in front of your property. But there's no sidewalks next door, or the next door after that, but the three houses down, four houses down, there's sidewalks again. So when house two and three come in to do whatever, then they will put sidewalks in. You're playing like the long game. You're playing the game, it's not a game, you're, you're waiting because it takes time to get connectivity. Because the farm field adjacent may never develop, but there's a potential road that may in 50, 60 years be there for if that farm field ever does develop. But if there's no stub road to that farm field, there's no interconnectivity to get through. So you actually have to plan for, for roads to nowhere, or roads to the future, as you have called them. You have to plan for those roads to the future for the future. So you may not always get direct interconnectivity immediately, but you, you're planning for that future connectivity, and that's what you do.
So this property, this, this application does meet the connectivity definition, then?
Yes, one, it does connect.
I think we're mixing up, we're mixing up how they get out of the, out by car versus connectivity.
Yeah, this application provides a stub road for future interconnectivity.
Which shouldn't be confused with how I leave this property to get out on the road.
Correct. That's your entrance, that's your egress and ingress and egress. But connectivity is, if you're looking for the future, it's your future interconnectivity to other developments, or how does it connect to other developments? And yes, this does share Dutchman's Avenue with Dutchman's Harvest, which shares the drive aisles with the Lodge, which has an entrance onto King's Highway.
Okay. So back to the, so back to a motion, we're basically, I think we're pushing towards, if we make, to postpone it, that gives us the opportunity to get the studies done, look at conditions, and we could be back here again?
So.
Or is it only a public hearing?
If, the study's not going to get done, the only way you're going to get the study done is if it's a condition of approval.
Okay, right.
Because there's no code requirement for it, so if you want that traffic operational study, it needs to be a condition of, it needs to be a recommendation of a condition to mayor and council. And then mayor and council then can implement it. If you have a concern about that, you could add, under that, the, the traffic operational study item, you could state that any safety recommendations identified in the plan shall be implemented in the site plan with approval by Del Dot. And I think that addresses how do, how does that happen? So if anything's identified, as long as Del Dot approves it, because I'm for, because Del Dot has control over that entrance, then we can look at those safety items. So when the study is complete, and again, study won't be complete, has to, the next step is if this makes it to mayor and council, and it goes to mayor and council, mayor and council holds their public hearing, makes a recommendation. And then if that condition stays and mayor and council approve that condition, then they go work on that condition. And then they'll come back as part of their final site plan and verify that compliance and provide that, that study. And then if there's any changes that need to be made, then the site plan is amended. If it's a significant amendment, it will go back to mayor and council. And mayor and council then has the opportunity to send it back to the planning commission or not. But think of it, if it's, I'm moving something a foot or two, that doesn't typically come back. That is insignificant. It's if, if we end up putting a tra, if Del Dot, if the study says traffic light needs to go in, then that's coming back to mayor and council because that's, that's a significant change to a plan. Does that help? Okay.
Can I ask a procedural question, Madam Chair? Is that fine?
Yes.
Just because it's not joyful to have for the developer lots of conditions, it's not joyful for council to remand back, you know, we've been through that world. So my question is, can the developer, hearing this conversation, I don't mean propose a new plan because I know that starts the clock, and I know we're in a tight window, but can the developer come back, listening to the concerns of the planning commission, and see if he can alter his plan on some of those items? So we can hone our conversations here on whatever you all want to limit the amount, the amount, does, does the developer have that right in this window to do that?
So between a recommendation from the planning commission, because they need a recommendation from planning commission to mayor and council, if they so choose to amend their plan based on some of the potential conditions, because again, these are just potential conditions, the final authority for all conditions falls to mayor and council. They can amend that plan and present a slightly amended plan based on those recommendations to the mayor and city council.
But not back to the planning commission?
Not back to the planning commission because planning commission, once they make their recommendation, it moves forward. Because they're then trying to implement some of the items that the planning commission has suggested.
So if the planning commission chooses to delay, to use this opportunity to gather more information, open up the public record, the developer can't, can't have a voice in that process?
Yes, if there was a public hearing, the developer would have an opportunity, just like any member.
Okay, so, so all I'm trying to say is, depending on where you all go, if you do pause, and some of the reasons I've just been hearing on the denial, gives the developer time to see if they can fix some of those, address them, modify them, whatever, their choice, then when you have your next meeting after the public hearing, maybe you'll be able to hone in on a few specifics that are critical. I don't know, just seems like, that's why I was asking, if there's an opportunity for the developer to listen and see if they can respond. Thank you.
And I also had just a procedural comment, too, is that if we recommended denial, there is nothing from stopping the applicant from fixing the connectivity issue and re-presenting, you know, reapplying, correct?
The denial goes to mayor and council. Mayor and council will hold a public hearing. Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely.
But it's not like it stops here if we vote to deny.
Yeah, a recommendation of denial sends, it is just a recommendation to denial to mayor and city council. City council will have an opportunity to hold a public hearing. But I think typically mayor and council would prefer some potential conditions on an application rather than a denial, but that is, that is me foreshadowing.
So that's where we would postpone, then? We would postpone to come up with the conditions that we would?
No, we could do that tonight.
Or we would do that tonight.
You can give us a list.
And one last question, too, is we seem to have a difference of opinion on connectivity. You're stating that connectivity through Dutchman's Harvest is connectivity. I personally.
No, that's equal.
Okay.
For me, it's evil.
It's all connectivity, it's all different forms of connectivity. Your entrance to this site is through Dutchman's Harvest.
Correct.
That entire entrance is not on this site plan. It is on Dutchman's Harvest site plan.
Right.
And that has been approved by Del Dot. But that is the, there, so there is connectivity to Dutchman's Harvest, to get to Dutchman's Avenue, to get to Savannah Road.
And it was approved by Del Dot without the additional burden of 90 more homes.
I do not answer that one.
Well, no, we know it was because when it was approved by Del Dot, this application did not exist.
Correct. I, that is correct. I just don't know what, if they took any consideration of any future development into consideration for that entrance.
They've rarely ever done that in the past, you know, and I would just make an off the, just a comment that I think we, our standards in Lewis for safety sometimes feel different than what Del Dot deems safe.
So I'm going to look to Madam Chair if she wants to have more discussion, or does she want to call for a vote on the motion?
Well, I, I think that we should not forward a recommendation to the, the council without more issues being addressed. So I think we should have further discussion of other issues.
Yeah, I think the motion on the table is to deny, though, right? So we could vote on that motion, and then put a second motion on the table, and then go through the conditions. We have a list of conditions, right, that we want to go through, and then say, okay, this is one we want to forward through.
So if you're going to go with that, that would be a recommendation for approval with those conditions.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, sorry, me. That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying.
But wait a second, there's, but they also, I want to make sure they have all their options, as council said. The other option they have is to pause and still discuss all the conditions that they then want to address in their public hearing. They had three choices, at least what I heard was, well, four, I guess, it's approve it, deny it, approve the conditions, pause it, but share your conditions. So there are four ways they can address tonight.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I agree with that. I think a pause is fine. I mean, that would be satisfactory because we'd be able to go through the conditions. But clearly on the table right now is a motion to deny. So we've got to, we've got to do one way or another, we've got to vote on that.
Right.
And then we can figure out one of the other two options we want to go forward with, right?
Right.
Because we do have a fairly lengthy list. And I was, just one side comment, too. I, I want to say, when I talk about connectivity, I'm not, this proposal to go through that, you know, future maybe possible development to the north, way may or may not come together. You know, that's, that's Lewis's idea of connectivity because we have these kinds of connectivities for neighborhoods all the time, right? That's, right? And quite frankly, I find it unfortunate that connectivity means going through neighborhoods with houses, you know, not a direct street, access street, as opposed to weave, we have to weave our way through in Lewis. That's, that's what the goal is here, apparently. But that's, that's, that's what it is. That's basically what it is. My connectivity issue, quite frankly, is the temporary one, okay? And that's the one that goes through the Lodge, okay? Because that one, the one access goes right around the entrance to the memory center, okay? If cars coming through have this little, little jux where you have to go around the entrance to the memory center, okay? It's, yeah, it was built technically, okay, to be the width of a through, of an access way, okay? It does meet code. That's why they're allowed to do it. It meets code, okay? But that's tall, what it is. It's a parking lot. It is a parking lot. Same thing with Dutchman's Harvest. That meets code, but it's a parking lot, and that has little kids on it, okay? The temporary access is the one that really bothers me, okay? You know, the idea that this plan puts on paper the addition of more traffic through that temporary access, okay? It's on paper. Thirty percent of the traffic is going to go through Dutchman's Harvest, Dutchman's Harvest and the Lodge, right? We're adding to the problem, okay? Because it's in the plan, right? That's the problem that really, I mean, long-term connectivity, it's okay, all right? Let's put the mystery road there, right? But the short term is the problem. That's the real problem, right?
Okay, should we vote on, on this motion?
Yes.
Please state your reasons for your vote.
Yes.
So.
Okay.
Okay, I vote to deny. I vote yes to, on the denial because the development does not have safe connectivity to a state or city roadway, and it does not meet the code because of that which is in our purposes, and we also, the purpose of the zoning code, it, it does not meet the safety requirements.
Okay, Thierry?
Well, I, I'm not going to support the motion. I agree that it would be highly desirable if the city code allowed us to deny the application on the basis of safety and the welfare of the community. Unfortunately, for reasons which I don't know, the, the city code and the, the map, the zoning map, does not have the annotation which would be necessary to, for us to be allowed to, to deny the application. The only thing that is missing, as far, and I would like Alex to inform or confirm what I'm saying, the only thing that is missing really is a note on the zoning map specifying just as it does for the cases where a prohibited use is going to actually be allowed because it closely resembles the characteristic for use of a specific zone, and here I'm referring to 19711. In the case of 19711 of the city code, it says specifically that a use that is not specifically allowed can be denied if the use does not create dangers to health and safety. So it's specifically indicated that the city council and the planning commission can actually deny an application when the, the use will create dangers to health and safety. Unfortunately, this same provision, which is in 19711, is not taken in the city code for the, what I would call the regular applications, which is what we have here. In the case of regular applications where the applicant is not asking for a deviation from the use which is permitted in the zone, in that instance, the city and, and the, the planning commission do not have the authority to deny on the basis of safety, which I, I think is, is an absurdity. When we had the debate, or when you had the debate on the Bluff property, the Henlopen Bluff, I made the case here, I believe, that the application should be denied because there was no safe exit from Henlopen Bluff onto Gilznick Road. And this commission ignored my request on the basis precisely that it could not deny based on safety. So here, unfortunately, because the city code does not have the, the five words that could avoid us being in this predicament, I will not support the motion. And I will encourage the representative of the city in this body to, to, to think about modifying the city code to specifically include a provision that for any application, be it subdivision or whatever, that any application which creates a danger to health and safety should be denied. So for today, I vote not to support the motion submitted by Ms. Evolt.
Yeah, I'm going to vote against the motion as stated. I, well, I have a lot of, not a lot, I have issues with this proposal certainly, and I certainly wish it was, it was better on paper and, and had solved some of those, what I consider be serious traffic issues. It's not within the purview of this recommendation, quite frankly. And I think the best avenue is to, is to deny and then go through the condition process in detail and impose conditions as, as we deem fit.
I'm, I am not going to vote to deny.
I'm, I am, uh, uh, not gonna vote to deny, uh, for, for reasons stated previously. But, uh, I think that we can, um, uh, improve the conditions that we are gonna recommend to mayor and city council and, um, and improve this application. But I think that, uh, a vote to deny, uh, uh, for reasons that, uh, that, uh, Thierry already stated would, um, uh, would not be, uh, would not hold up legally and, uh, and, and would be a disservice to mayor and city council to, to give them that recommendation.
Okay, Mary Linda?
I'm going to keep my vote to deny. As I said earlier, it's because Lewis has required and voted for connectivity. There's no connectivity in the proposed development plan except to connect to two parking lots of other develop- developments, Dutchman's Harvest and the Lodge. And, um, the plan present, the plan as presented has only won a future plus potential access to a private property as a possibility that is Road C. So, and as I said before, this is a safety issue.
Okay.
And I'm unfortunately unable to vote, um, but if I did, I would, uh, deny the, the current motion for the reasons being, um, uh, the safety issues with regards to, uh, the unknown on to entrances on the Savannah Road and all the implications of that.
And I also do not support the motion, uh, for the reasons previously given.
So now you're looking at another motion to do something? Or just continue discussion? It's usually.
I think we need to just continue discussions on other issues that we have with the, with the overfalls.
And we do have, um, just a query, we do have other business that we have to get to tonight. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
So, uh, could, could we look at, um, uh, just putting little parameters on, on, uh, on, on our time tonight? I am, I am concerned, just let me, this is a little digressing just for a moment. But we do have some new members of the, uh, of the planning commission. I am, I am just concerned, and we do have members of the public here as well. And I am concerned that if these things go on and on and on, and we're really here too late, that new members of the planning commission are gonna get discouraged, that they, that, you know, what have I got myself into? I might get me home till ten thirty, eleven o'clock at night. That, that we just need to be a little more disciplined and efficient in how we conduct these. And, uh, um, uh, so, uh, so I think that we should, um, uh, proceed and have some more discussion, but put some limits on it and get to the business at hand, uh, so that we can get out of here at a reasonable hour. I think that that, there, there, it's not just a, a funny thing. I think it's important, uh, for the functioning of this commission.
So two items, there is a two-hour time limit. You have forty-six minutes, eight minutes till you have to take a vote to continue moving on. Do you want to continue discussion, or do you want to make a motion? Or do you need to schedule a special meeting to get this done, to, to make a potential motion within that a hundred and twenty days?
You want a special meeting?
Yeah, I, I mean, a special meeting, I mean, it's, it's a, uh, we, we still have to go through this list of proposed conditions, have further discussion with it. Um, as you know, the time is getting late if we just, because we do have other things on the agenda. So a special meeting to me makes sense within the hundred and twenty day window.
You have, you have to make a decision by February twelfth? I have February eleventh available for a special meeting.
Nothing before then?
So Tuesday.
So just to clarify, um, if you want a special meeting for discussion and possible action, we need seven days' notice under FOIA.
Yeah.
If you would like to take in new evidence, uh, that's a public hearing which requires fifteen days' public notice in practice, a couple of days longer to get to the newspapers.
So.
So just as a question, is it possible to schedule a public hearing followed by a special meeting? We have done that in the past. Just so that no stern is, no stone is unturned, I think the developers had an opportunity to hear the connectivity concern in particular.
Well, I, I'm not sure we have any new information that's coming before us though.
And you do not have.
Yeah, that's true.
So I don't see the point of having another public meeting.
No, the only thing that I brought up that was new was the school code issue. And that's not new information from the developer.
Right. Okay, my, my preference would be to have a meeting sooner rather than getting to the, to the deadline.
So what does the last, okay, that is, what is that? That's not gonna be good. Sorry, I'm trying to look at the, I have to look at multiple, uh, council, uh, multiple agendas to figure out who has what going on. You know, we got a few meetings going on in the city.
Janelle, as you're looking to schedule that, Alex, I just want you to reiterate that if they don't have a public miring, hearing, which is the chair's choice, they cannot, uh, share any additional information, including I heard some tonight that were maybe not part of the public record. In other words, none of the commissioners can go and talk to anyone. And they can, you can talk to anyone you want to, but you can't bring it into your decision-making, correct?
Correct. Conditions and decisions to approve or deny should be based on evidence entered into the record, and the record's closed at this point. So you could reopen the record if you want to take in more information, uh, but at this point, the record's closed.
So the twenty-third is a week from tomorrow. I can do a, a meeting, um, we can do the twenty-fourth, which is a Friday. I'm just putting it out there, um. The twenty-ninth is available. The thirtieth is available. That's a Wednesday and a Thursday.
Well, why don't, why don't we do the Wednesday, the twenty-ninth?
Wednesday, the twenty-ninth, what time would you like to meet?
And Janelle, just clarification, they are not held to meeting at an evening time. They can choose any time.
They can meet any time they want. That's why I asked what time.
Yeah, commissioners in, I'm just saying, as commissioners.
It's a special meeting.
It's a special meeting.
Even in a regular meeting, they.
They can set their time.
Yes, there's a typical time, but they have the ability to amend that.
And with that being considered, the fact that you have the flexibility and time, do you have other dates other than the twenty-third available? But does that open up?
Well, we talked, well, right now they're looking at the twenty-ninth.
Okay.
How does three o'clock work for people?
I can't make twenty-ninth in the afternoon.
You can or can't?
I can't.
But could you make it in the evening if we did it as an evening meeting?
Or in the morning?
I can do it.
Yeah.
I can do it in the morning, but I can't, and I can't do it in the afternoon. Or the, I can make, do it in the morning or the evening. I just can't do it here.
I can do it ten o'clock.
Rich, how about you?
I'm, I'm gonna be in, in DC.
Okay, so the twenty-ninth's out, the thirtieth. Again, I can do a ten o'clock or a three o'clock or something in the afternoon. I, there are other meetings I do have that day. So we can do ten, um, three or an evening meeting. On the thirtieth, that is a Thursday.
I can do an afternoon, we're evening on that day, but not a morning.
I could do the twenty-ninth. You said you could do the morning. I'd be doing it by soon.
You can't do the thirtieth?
Thirtieth, I could do the morning, but the.
Deborah's out in the morning. But you're good in the, on the twenty-ninth in the morning? Commissioner Evans?
I think so.
Okay. Morning?
The earlier the better, like nine?
That's up to you guys. Usually.
It's okay with me.
All right with me.
Mary Linda Matty? Okay, I got it. It's Wednesday, the twenty-ninth.
Can we do nine-thirty?
I can do, yes. Okay. Okay, so somebody's bringing donuts and coffee. Um, so I'm gonna put that down as a special meeting. I'm just gonna, I'm putting it on, on calendars now. Um, so we said nine-thirty.
Oh, wait, oh, gosh.
Oh, oh, that's a.
I've got a ten o'clock.
Okay, so that's a no.
Should we just stick with evening meeting because?
It'll be an hour. I could do a, I could do it at eleven on the twenty-ninth.
All right.
Is that, I'm good?
Good?
Mary Linda Matty, Commissioner Matty, eleven?
You sure, Rich? Yeah, I got, I'm sorry.
Um, I, I got an afternoon new meeting in Newark, two o'clock, so, um, I mean, I don't have to leave here at one, so.
It gives you guys two hours to discuss and make a decision, which is gonna come back, which one, by the way, that is your two-hour limit, um, for any meeting. And it reinforces the recommendation, the recommendation from Commissioner Innis. So, okay, I have you from, um, a le-, special LPC meeting Wednesday, January twenty-ninth at eleven AM. I'm gonna verify to see if we can get here. If not, we will be in council chambers, because I do have to check this room with somebody. I am gonna put it on, on the agenda for here, because this is your normal spot, but just in case, I will let everyone know if it cannot be here. Okay. Thank you very much for getting that taken care of.
Okay, so we'll move on then to the next issue, which, um, is new business. The Carriage House at Cape Henlopen, time extension for the waiver.
Okay, so this one's a little bit odd. I'm just gonna give a background while the applicant's coming forward. A site plan have a maximum length of time that they may be valid for. Um, in this case, um, this site plan shall be under construction by March fourteenth of this year, otherwise the site plan shall expire. Um, the applicant will explain why they are here, asking for relief from the waivers, modification and variances section of the code, of the code that says, uh, site plan shall not be granted more time than thirty-six months. They are at their maximum. Um, and that is why they are here tonight, um, to ask for, this is just a recommendation. This, we do ask for a recommendation tonight because we are in a tight timeframe. Because the mayor and council do have to actually hold a public hearing. You do not, you may take public comment. That is definitely, um, something you can do. But if you could make a recommendation tonight, um, we would greatly appreciate that. No pressure, I promise. And then I'm gonna turn it over to, um, the applicant and their representative.
Thank you, Janelle. Thank you for us having to be here tonight. Uh, I am Eric Wall. I'm a registered landscape architect with Panoni. And I'm here with Mr. Rick Quill, uh, the client, uh, for the property. So as Janelle said, uh, we are getting close to our deadline for the site plan, uh, and we need to be under construction uh, by March fourteenth, I believe is the date. We are at the finish line. However, we have approvals out there that are coming in soon. But with the timeframe getting close, we're concerned about that missing the mark and getting actual shovels in the ground. So, uh, a quick summary of where we stand right now. Uh, we do have fire and martial approval. Uh, we have submitted everything to our agency's final plans. They've been going back and forth since the summer with comments and everything, and there's a, lots of timeframes and lots of get, you know, back and forth with conversations and, and, and changes. So SCD, uh, Sussex Conservation District, uh, was submitted December twentieth, the final plans, and they're being reviewed right now. The Office of Drinking Water, uh, was submitted in late December, and they're being reviewed right now. The Denrec wastewater, uh, permit is under review. Uh, that was submitted December thirty-first. Uh, Del Dot entrance plan, uh, that was submitted, the left final plan was just submitted, uh, December twentieth. That's under review. And also, uh, the last changes we had for the city of Lewis, uh, was just submitted December thirtieth. And unless there's any additional comments generated from that, that should be good to go. We also received, uh, the Del Dot letter of no objection to record the plan in September, um, twenty, twenty-four. And also the Denrec, uh, notice of intent, uh, was received in June of last year. So that is where we are right now, and we are afraid of those reviews coming in too late. Um, we do expect most of them to come in mid-February. However, with the city of Lewis and the changes that they might have, or any additional comments they might have from our final plans, plus Del Dot entrance plans also might have a few changes back and forth, we're just afraid that that deadline is too close. So we are asking for, after I talked with Rick here, or Mr. Quill, um, before the meeting, we are requesting a six-month extension just to be safe. But like I said, we expect to have all of our approvals, hopefully, knock on wood, within the next two months or so. Uh, but again, that's gonna be over our deadline limit, um, for the site plan.
Good evening. Um, thank you for your time, staff and mission members. Uh, we really appreciate it. Yes, and we're not going to, uh, we're not gonna give, I'm not gonna give a long harangue, just that this is a, a project that I started. At the end of this month will be eight years. And, uh, and the city, in case somebody weren't here or didn't know, there was a lot of different options we gave the city throughout the course of those eight years. I resoned commercial, then I did, you know, I wanted to, uh, go, uh, switch gears and had to rezone to residential. It was complicated with that with the city, with the city with Del Dot. Anyway, the long end of the story is, um, in our March fourteenth, uh, twenty-twenty-two, we had a five-to-zero vote, uh, with the council. I think they supported it. They supported our, our concept, whatever. I believe it's a win-win for the city in the sense that perpetual property taxes, transfer taxes, and, uh, it's gonna improve that, uh, uh, that, that corner. The point is what I don't know if people understand, which I never did a project this before. I used to buy a lot here and there. I bought a number of lots, not a number. I built houses in this town on Park Avenue, on Chestnut Street, whatever. It's an end-use lot. You go in, you buy it, you conform to the, you know, you submit your plans to the city. This animal is a, this, this property is a whole different animal when you're dealing with state agencies. And there are good causes in your code book that talks about, you know, getting permits. Uh, and if you, if you, if you read my letter, uh, there, you know, what, and I wrote it to his hand because I'm not that sophisticated. You know, on the course of getting approvals, I, uh, segue in because the city had, uh, contacted one of the council members about buying the lot for parking. I always said if they want to throw parking, I would forego the development of this property for the benefit of my, I'm, I live on Lewis Beach, two blocks away from this site. And, and then the course of that process, the city decided not to, they opted not to, but two days after that opted not to, a developer builders per se that they're building all over this, uh, up in Wilmington, accused me of re-trading the property and putting me in a lawsuit. Two days, I, the sheriff showed up at my house. And that took thirteen months. And it was during that course, it was like, I, you know, you talk to lawyers and, you know, what's gonna happen? Anything can happen. But in that course, I, about six months into that, I didn't know. I said, I gotta start weaponizing all the procedures, the process, the state agencies. And that's when I contacted Panoni. And that was, uh, you know, well over a year and a half ago. I'll just point out to you, if you've never done this process, state agencies, and I'm not, they have the best interests of, of us all. I'm not condemning them. I'm not going to, to organize them. It takes time. You deal with Denrec, you deal with Del Dot, you deal with any of them, and I don't care who you are. It doesn't matter. I'm, I'm, I'm a nobody, but it doesn't matter who you are. It takes time, this give and take. And I'll give you an instance. The other night at the, uh, mayor and council meeting, they were talking about the, uh, first issue was about the parking, or parking issue over there. You're talking about trying to coordinate something with Del Dot. You'll find out. I mean, I think you guys have a lot more muscle, a lot more, uh, than I could get to. But it, it was interesting at the end of the meeting, when you had an open conversation, I forget the gentleman's name, because I went out in the hallway and I came back, and he was perplexed. He got up there and it was a, a. He got up there and it was a, a give and take about Del Dot and about what happened this past, a couple months ago on King's Highway, the, the, uh, the, uh, traffic backup. And he did his homework. I mean, he really did his homework on Del Dot. And I'm not saying it's like curd and butterflies, it's to get answers, they're invasive. And again, I am not here to say that all, it's all the fault of Denrec, Del Dot. It's a combination. And if you read my letter at the good cost, we're just asking because we're, we're, I believe we're at the goal line. I believe it's a win-win, and I think this is a project that, you know, the city will be proud of when it's all done. Thank you.
I just had one quick question. Um, so we are to connect that, you know, we can see that the, um, state approvals were filed pretty late. They were filed this past December. And is, was the reason for that because of the lawsuit?
These were final plans being submitted. So, we started submitting plans last year earlier, uh, early summer, even probably before that. And there's a process where you go back and forth, they comment, you have to make revisions, they comment again, you make revisions. So, we're at the final, final plans with our, hopefully, all the comments have been addressed, and we have no more. But just to be safe, especially with Del Dot and, and with the city, um, with the city of Lewis, there's a lot more comments that come back and forth. So, we're just trying to like, cover our bases per se.
So, they weren't applied for, that was when you applied the final, after working through the issues with them? Okay, that makes much more sense.
And I can also, and not to prolong this, a typical example is the Alaska Avenue, when the city, the Lewis BPW and the city agreed to, Lewis BPW agreed to improve the water sewer lines that are dated up there. And, uh, the city was gracious enough to say we're gonna pick that sort of street. Well, we had to get Del Dot involved, because there's a water issue across the street, which, which a lot of people don't understand, because we're very keenly aware. I was brought up during a public hearing that there was water across the street, and we're very concerned about it. And we brought it up with Del Dot, because we heard that they were gonna try to, uh, get a solution to that. And, and they were gonna try to, again, I don't wanna get into too much detail. So, with the cities, you know, Alaska Avenue improvements, and their, their, uh, position on engineering, how much time that takes? It's, it's a lot, it's, it, again, it's a lot of different, uh, elements have to come together. And it's not that we haven't worked on it, we have, it's just been, it's taking time. And that's why we're here tonight.
I, I have a question for the city planner. In case the city council, we make a recommendation to approve, and the city council asks you if you have a copy of the cover sheets evidencing that these various permit applications have been submitted. Do you have that in your records, right?
Yes, and we had a meeting, and they are copying me on every, um, submittal correspondence, so I can know where they are at, because they actually have to be under construction in a month and a half, by March fourteenth. Like, literally, building permit issued, agency approvals, building permit issued and under construction, so, um-
Good. So, and a, a question for the applicant. Can you tell us, your, your financing for this project, i- is wrapped up? Once you get all these permits approved, you will be able to start construction in a reasonably expeditious manner?
So, I can't give you exact details.
No, don't go into the details.
But I can tell you, before I, so I had a business partner, and it's why, when I first bought the city, they lived in this town, and they were, and it's not a result of any people here, they were sorely disappointed how we were treated. So, they wanted out. The new business partner that I, that I, uh, partnered with is one of the strongest business partners I could ever imagine. Yes, financing with Artisan Bank, and, uh, Artisan Bank, Herb, Chris, Cheryl, and Darrell. Yes, we have the financing in place for, for all this to go forward.
Good.
Now, of course, I'm gonna hope we sell some units, or we feel so we're fine.
Yes, yes. Well, I, personally, I don't feel that the planning commission needs to go into these details, but I wouldn't be surprised if the city council is asking you to elaborate a little bit.
Trust me, if it wasn't for this business partner relationship, I'd have been out of this field, because I just couldn't take it anymore. Joe and Carl, so yes, all that is in place.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? So, there was a gap between the city's approval and when you actually submitted plans for review? Is that correct?
Well, there was a timeframe where, um, the Alaska Avenue improvements had to get worked out and engineered by the city, with all the utilities being located there too. And we had to wait for that in order for us to proceed with Del Dot and some other, uh, issues on our site, because they had to meet up and match. So, we had to wait till that was all completed before we could move ahead with our design.
I see.
When was that done, the Alaska Avenue?
It was completed last, in the summer.
Late summer. Uh, we got that taken care of, and I got plans late fall. And I got my plans turned around rather quickly. And now I got new plans sitting on my desk. So.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion?
Go ahead. Yes, I, I move that we approve the request submitted by Mr. Quill.
I second that, that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Mary Linda?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, next item is to schedule a public hearing for conditional use with a site plan for the Donovan Smith manufactured home park.
Let me get my calendar back out. Um, again, if you do recall, um, there was a number of code changes that needed to happen so we could finally get to this point. We have finally gotten to this point. So, the application is, has been submitted, the fee has been paid. So, now the next step is to schedule the public hearing. Um, you can do this at your regularly scheduled meeting early, or you can pick another date. Um, so you just let me know, and I've got my calendars ready to look at if you wanna do a, a different date.
Regularly scheduled? What is, so there's no timeframe, I mean, there's no deadlines that we are facing, other than we wanna be expeditious?
Other than you wanna be expeditious. Your regularly, regular, your next regular scheduled meeting, I cannot talk, tonight, is February nineteenth.
And, uh, let me just understand what we're scheduling a hearing for?
To review the conditional use application. So, the, so, um, it's a conditional use with a site plan.
So, we will be seeing a proposed site plan from a developer that's-
You're gonna be seeing a site plan that shows all the land leased areas with the existing homes and outbuildings shown on the plan, and the property corners marked on the plan. I'm gonna admit, I have not reviewed this plan yet. I've been waiting for it to, to officially come in, so.
You haven't received it yet, excuse me for interrupting.
No, I do have this application.
Yeah.
We've been-
But the plan itself you haven't received? I'm sorry to interrupt.
So, I, I do have the plan.
Okay.
I just haven't reviewed the plan, because I'm not reviewing a plan. There was an issue about the fee, that has been resolved, the fee has been paid. So, staff did not do anything with this application until we had a complete application and a, a final application. So, that has been resolved, so now I need to, um, to get that and review that, um, and then provide comments. But the current, the, the, the plan does show all the land lease areas, shows the property markers that have been pinned, and all of the homes, the location of all of the homes in relation to the, the land lease lines and the accessory structures in relation, and it shows the setbacks.
The accessory structures, I'm not following.
The access, your sheds.
Okay. Oh, accessories.
Accessory structures.
I thought you said access, ex, never mind, access restructures.
And, you know.
Okay, I was like, what, what are those? Okay, no, accessory structures I'm familiar with.
All of those are shown on the plans. Um, I need to do a, a thorough review. Um, again, GMB will not be reviewing this plan, because the water, sewer are all taken care of.
Right.
Great.
You know.
That's great news, yes.
May I, may I offer a little-
That was only twenty years in the context to this whole thing, and I'll stand for correction, but I'm pretty sure I'm right.
And that is, at the time that the city council annexed this parcel in, there was no site plan for the property. There was, what I would describe, and this is too far of a stretch, a, something drawn on the back of a napkin kind of thing. And there was, you know, no one knew where the property points were, uh, and certainly not even where the, the leased lots, where those lots were plotted. So, that all has been accomplished as a result of the water sewer work that was done, GMB. They ended up with the survey work that was done, figure, you know, create order to what was chaos. So, that, if that's helpful, that's why this is before you now.
Yeah.
And this is part of the annexation process?
So, a manufactured- So, I can explain. There are three types of uses. Um, a permitted use.
Right.
So, like, your house on your property is outright permitted. There are uses that require conditional use. Typically, they make sense for that neighborhood and that area, but they go through a public hearing process to get feedback from the public, and you can place conditions on them. And then there's others, like a bed and breakfast, that gets to go to the board of adjustment for some other reason, as a special exception. Those are your three types of uses, if you remember from my little part, my zoning one-on-one class. This, a manufactured home community in the R-two zoning district, which is what the property is owned, is a conditional use.
Okay.
So, it needs to come through that process, and with that is a site plan that is coming with it.
So, it's being formalized.
It is being formalized, yes.
And it will be in compliance.
Right.
Yes, and based on the changes in the code, we now, they have pinned all the land lease areas, and we have a lot of information. So, um, the next step is to schedule a public hearing, um, to hear from the neighbors, um, and the residents, and for you to consider the conditional use as a manufactured home community.
Madam Chair, I have a, a question. I know that, um, recently H Park, um, modified some of their rules so that if there's a, a house being built, uh, neighbors are notified by signage. Pardon me, will this also, does this also prompt signage?
Oh, yes, so this is a public hearing?
Yeah. I don't, I don't mean signage like at a city hall, I mean, in that neighborhood.
The yellow posting sign will go up.
It will go up, okay, so I'll make sure we're doing that.
That's why I need them to schedule the public hearing.
Gotcha.
Certified green return receipt letters will be sent to the adjacent property owners. It doesn't mean the property owners who live there get a green return receipt certified, um, but we will be making sure they are noticed of this, this application.
Can, can we request that they receive that? I know that it's not typical, and further, we have had this issue before.
Right.
Could we ask that that be in English and Spanish?
We're gonna do. So, yeah, if you wanna give me a little bit more heads up, I'm gonna try and make sure we have somebody who can, um, interpret for that public hearing.
And I think, but just letting people get here is the real trick on it, um.
So, again, that's why I'm asking, when would you like to have this meeting, this public hearing?
I, I would propose this, that just because it came up before, is that, um, many of the restaurants in there, many of the people who live in, in the park either work in, um, lawn care or in restaurants. And restaurants are generally closed here on Monday or Tuesday nights, is usually the closed night. So, if I can just put that out there as a extra consideration.
No, that's a nice consideration.
Yeah, I was gonna throw out a Saturday, but, you know.
Uh, you know what, I would do it for this.
In certain instances, again, I don't wanna work on a Saturday, nobody wants to.
But a, but a Monday, it's, it's more of the residents to be-
Okay, um-
Saturday is a busy day for restaurants, that's a good point.
That's true. Okay, so a Tuesday could be the eighteenth.
Of February?
Of February.
So, the seventeenth would be a Monday?
Seventeenth is a Monday, but there's a Parks and Rec commission meeting, so you cannot, that is busy. The twenty-fifth is busy.
The seventeenth is, is a, is President's Day, does the city, it's a holiday.
I need to put that on my calendar, so I stopped trying to schedule meetings.
Right.
Because I tried to schedule meetings for next Monday.
President's Day, city's government's closed on February, Monday, February seventeenth.
Let me put that on my calendar.
That's right, because it, they did, you did send out the notice that there's no Parks and Rec next month.
Next, 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 next Monday, they moved it to, back a week. Okay, so, uh-
There are no other meetings on May twenty-fourth, I mean, May, in February twenty-fourth, sorry, May, who knows?
Yeah, the twenty-fourth is good for a Monday.
How's that with you all, folks?
Let's do it then.
I need-
Tuesdays are bad for me.
Tuesdays are bad, so Monday, the twenty-fourth, before, um, PRC change, has to change their meeting.
Yeah, get yours in.
February twenty-fourth, is that?
We need to make sure that Rich will be here, because I cannot be here.
Okay, we will wait for him to come back then. Um, let's talk about a backup date, and what time would you like that meeting?
I would propose no early, no late, no earlier than six-thirty, knowing that many people do work and that we want public-
And we want public participation as much as we can get it.
Okay. So, we have a tentative date, uh, in Febr- Monday, February twenty-fourth at six-thirty for a public hearing, that gives us plenty of time to do public notice. If you're going to make that a motion, and you would like, um, the owner to send a letter, green return receipt certified to all the residents within the park, that, if that's okay with Alex, that might be a good thing to do in a motion?
And how would, how would we enforce that, knowing the history with this?
Oh, no, they have to provide the green, the return receipt.
Okay.
They actually have to provide the certified notice and the return receipt to the city.
Okay. I'll wait for Rich to return.
I'm so sorry.
No, that's okay.
That's okay, that's okay.
So, we're looking to schedule the public hearing on Monday, February twenty-fourth at six-thirty. So, if you could, and Mary Linda, is that good for you? Alright, I got a hands up.
Okay, so now we should make that motion?
No, no, no. Rich is still checking his calendar.
Yes, that, that is good, what time?
Six-thirty? And we're gonna get that in there before Park's- That will be in here?
Okay, and that there's an additional thing. So, um, I'm gonna make a motion to approve a public hearing to review the, um, site plan for the Donovan Smith manufactured home park on Monday, oh, I'm sorry, continued, conditional use with the site plan
Thank you.
For Donovan Smith manufactured home park on Monday, February, um, twenty-fourth at six-thirty PM. And that the owner of Donovan Smith manufactured home park will send certified letters in English and Spanish to all residents of Donovan Smith.
In addition to the normal public notice requirement, and it's all green, certified green return receipt.
With certified green return receipts, and this is in addition to the regular, public notice.
Thank you.
I'll second. No, 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 no. I'll second what she said.
H Park has made me better at these long motions.
I vote in favor.
Call for a vote.
Alright, um, let's take a vote. Or, we had a second?
Yes.
Okay. Thierry?
I, I vote in favor.
Okay. Deborah?
Aye.
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 And Mary Linda had a hand up. So, I believe it was unanimous vote. Okay.
Okay, then we move to the ordinance to attend, to amend the public notice requirements. Can you explain?
So, as the planning commission, uh, several months ago, asked staff to, uh, come up with several cleanup ordinances every month, um, this is one of the items, uh, that does need to be cleaned up. Um, currently, what the ordinance says is that you have to do public notice, which is the certified green return receipt and a yellow posting sign for any time an application is on an agenda. And that causes confusion for most everybody, because they think they're, especially the public, because they get a notice for a meeting, and they think that's the public hearing. You do public notice for a public hearing. We can come up other ways, if you want, to let people know of, of an application being submitted, but what the legal notice and for the public hearing is, is that's when you want to notify the, the residents, and that's when you want the yellow sign to come up. It's caused, it's caused confusion at Parks and Rec Commission, it's caused confusion at other, other commissions and meetings because of the way it's currently written. That was not the intent. The intent was to, to actually, the original way for the subdivision code was that you got a letter when an application was submitted, but it didn't tell you when the public hearing was. And then you didn't get notice of the public hearing. So the intent was to shift that public notice from the beginning to notice of the public hearing. And then, and of course, it'll, it's any public hearing. But like, what you don't want to do is send a public notice for when you're scheduling a public hearing date. It causes confusion, especially for the public, because they think they're coming out for something, and you're scheduling a hearing. So the intent is just to clean that up and make sure it's very specific, that the public notice requirement, which is the notice to neighbors within so many feet, that it's green certified receipt, and then the yellow sign go up for public hearings.
Um, I'd just like to say something we did recently on H Park is, prior, there was no yell, there were no yellow signs that would go up when an application was filed. So we now are having yellow signs put up when there is an application. So it isn't at the time of a public hearing, it's when the application goes in. That has been really beneficial, because we have had much more people, many more people coming out and giving input. And it's, neighbors were often unaware until everything was said and done. I like this idea, and I think that it makes more sense to do the letter when it's a public hearing, but I think it makes most sense for when an application is filed, that the sign will go up then, because we are a seasonal community, and it takes time sometimes for people to see, you know, depending on the time of year, or for it to filter to them through their neighbors. So I would propose that a sign goes up with an application, but a letter is not sent out until it's a public hearing.
So typically, the yellow sign states when the public hearing is. So if I, if staff installs a sign-
Which often, though, is only, that's two weeks' notice, generally, right?
And that is the, that is actually state law, that it's 15 days prior to, so people get two weeks' notice. There is also a legal ad in a newspaper of local circulation. That is actually usually more than two weeks because of the deadline.
Which we know, nobody out, out of state, well, some people do subscribe, but most people out of state read online. And that, they're not reading the public notices online, usually. Not usually.
That I don't know. I, I do know people do read the newspaper. People do see the yellow signs, people do get the, the, the letters, and that is, again, they all go out at the same time, because that way then it's consistent, they all go at the same time.
It's just nice to give people more, more notice than less.
Absolutely.
You know, is it possible to do two signs? That the second sign goes out when the public notice is scheduled, but the application, when that is filed, the sign goes up? That's, that's really a question, what everyone here thinks. So a sign will go up when the application is filed, and then when the letters are sent out and the public hearing is scheduled, an additional sign will go up, you know, ideally it would be a little different color. But the signs have been helpful, and that's why I'm suggesting that.
Yeah, because again, for H Park, there, there was no public notice requirement, except for a public hearing. So we started just doing a, a public notice for H Park, letting the peo, the people know that there's an application for that property. It's not part of a public hearing, but the yellow posting sign is a requirement as part of the public hearing. If we want to try that, I just would not put that in code, because when does that need to be posted? Because if I get an application on a Monday, and I'm on vacation, am I now in trouble because I didn't post nap, post that on that Monday? Or if it comes in at four o'clock?
Yeah, that's, I understand what you're saying.
My brain's just going through all the, the considerations, I'm not disagreeing.
It's not, it's not a deal breaker here, it's, it's fine, but I just like, more notice than other, than less.
Yeah.
I would also think that if you put a sign up when the application is filed, and then you put another sign up when the hearing is, is posted, people may not read the second sign, because there's always been a sign there, you know, so it may be better to keep it to just the one sign.
Yeah, because we also had that complaint, it's, because we're putting up a sign without any public hearing dates, because that's what used to happen, and it was like, well, that's just weird.
Yeah, yeah.
So I just want to make sure it's cleaner for the public, that's all I'm asking. But I'm-
I think-
Okay, Mary Linda?
Yeah. Yeah, I think if you put up a second sign with a different color, then people will know that something's different. I always see those signs, and I always read them. But the second sign with a different color, I think is a good idea. Because that would say to me, this is something different than what I read two weeks ago, or whatever.
I take a picture of them.
Me too.
No, I don't, but I used to when I was not on these commissions.
So I think what we could do, if, if that's something you're thinking of, we could do like a trial run and see how it works, and just like, a policy to try, and not maybe a code requirement.
It's really up to everyone else.
I'm just thinking-
I'm not looking to create this work.
No, no, I'm just thinking, doing everything, I think a hundred miles an hour, and I'm trying to think all the little different steps in my head, that's all I'm- And I'm trying to think, oh, that's a good idea, and then how do I implement that?
How much, right, how much extra work is this going to entail? And, and what are we buying for that extra work? That's my question.
So a thousand sign, or a hundred signs, fifty sign, fifty signs, it's about $600, $700? Because they're more expensive when we buy in bulk. H Park has learned that, that's why they have a hundred signs, which will last them about three years.
But the labor involved in going out and-
Labor involved is me or somebody else finding about 10 minutes to write out the sign, and then getting one of the building inspectors to go out and post it, take a picture, save the picture, print the picture, and put the picture in the, in the packet. So probably about a whole half hour, 45 minutes to do the entire thing.
You know, I, I just think we should try to keep the process as simple as possible. Two signs, to me, sounds like doing double work for the same project. If we can do it, I mean, I, I think the staff recommendation, quite frankly, is reasonable. Try that, why don't we try that and see how that works? And then if you have issues, we can come back and try to double sign, all right? It seems like, makes more sense.
Okay, do I have a motion?
May I speak up?
Yes.
Say something. At any point in time, are we going to discuss the content of the suggested changes? Or is that what is, are we gonna do that also, or are you only talking?
Suggested changes for-
For the edits, the notice requirements that were provided in the document that was attached to the agenda?
Certainly we can-
You know, there's new text in here.
Right.
Well, that's what I was kind of-
That's what, I was accepting that new text, and then making an additional comment towards it, but-
Well, then, if that's appropriate, I'd like to make a couple suggestions for you all to consider. First of all, I do believe that there, of the six items that are enumerated here, that you all, that the requirement should include that for a property that has frontage on two right-of-ways, that there be a sign placed on each right, each right-of-way, the side of each right-of-way, okay? And my language, I suggested, with number seven would be on the chance of the lot, the parcel has exposure on two city right-of-ways, a sign will be posted on each right-of-way. Okay, so that would include alleys, for example? You know, it's not only a paved street, a street, but it would be on an alley, and that alley frontage would be used to drive notice, it would support the notice. The other thing, and if you agree to that, I would suggest that number two, in a prominent, easy, visible location, it would be locations plural, as an edit. And the last thing I would like to speak to is what you all just discussed with respect to the two signs and the letter. This is a suggestion, and I'm gonna probably have a question in here, too. And that is, it seems to me that it would be very helpful if the letter to the property owners was used as a notice that there is going to be a, there's an application that's been received. And that notice would indicate the process that would be followed for a, you know, that you all will be following. And that includes, of course, you know, meeting, a hearing, you provide website information so that people could actually track where that you are in your process. And then when you go to, actually, having to establish a hearing date, one sign would satisfy that notice requirement. It would be more, you know, it wouldn't be supported by another letter. It would be, it would be part of what was described in the letter as part of the process. Does that make sense?
I'm gonna admit, I, Alex asked me a question as to where I got some of that language from, and I was like, I'm copying another section of code, so I caught half of that. I do apologize, normally I do pay attention really well.
No, I understand, no, no problem.
But the simpler, the better.
Right.
Just so you know, if, if, so like, overfall preserve, there are three signs on that property, because there are three parcels that make up that application.
Right.
So we, we hit every single parcel.
But I, I would just-
But like a corner, we could probably put it at the corner.
I would just want to make sure that the expectation is established, the requirement is established, and that it would be a way for you as the planning department, and the planning commission, and the neighbors, the residents, to understand what they could expect from each, you know, each, from the planning department, from the commission, and, you know, for them to take interest in what's going on in their neighborhood.
Yeah, I think, I think what Councilman Richard's saying is, in that letter, if you explain the steps of the process, you're educating.
Okay, yeah, that, I, I'm sorry, I was, I thought, Janelle was speaking to the signage piece, but there was the letter piece also that I spoke to, Janelle, did you hear that?
She, that's what she had missed, she missed the whole.
That's what she missed.
She missed the letter part, I apologize.
That's okay, that's okay, because like, for like the signage part, we can probably put it at a corner, depending on what it is. If not, sometimes, yeah, I will put, actually, I'll make two signs and put it on both, because I want to make sure people get it.
Right, I, I-
But for the letter, I don't, staff doesn't write the letters. The applicant is responsible for providing the letters.
I understand.
But isn't it, doesn't it have to be reviewed by staff to make sure that it complies with?
Does not.
Well-
Do they? Yes, do, do some of them, yes. Some of them do.
But you could, what you could do is have a template, and say applicant, prepare your letter, and the planning commission asks that you incorporate this.
Right, these basic items must be included in this letter.
Yeah.
And that is, I think, set forth in the, within the code. It states very clearly, I believe, what is expected.
Yes, it's usually, so it's the name, the location, the tax parcel number, I usually try to get them to put the address, the time, date, and location of the hearing.
Right.
And then I usually try to get them what is being, I try to get them, the nu, the application number into, into the, and then, like, some of them will actually go above and beyond and actually include a copy of the plan in the letter. So everybody kind of does it a little bit differently, they all have their own little format. But what you're looking at is, this is the first public hearing, this is the public hearing before the planning commission, this is the first public hearing.
We know, but my, the suggestion I made was that the letter would be triggered at the time that the application is received. And then it would include, that letter would be addressed to the affected parties, the people who qualify for notice, and it would include a description of the entire process that would be, it would, it would inform the public that there is, you know, the planning commission has a function-
Received an application.
They've received the application, that there will be a meeting scheduled, that there will, following the meeting, there will be a hearing scheduled, and a decision will be made post-hearing. And so by laying out the entire framework, then, and including, of course, phone numbers that would, applicable phone numbers, and certainly the website, where they will be able to find updates on where the application is in the process, then you have, you've informed people early in the process of what-
Yes.
The whole picture, how it's gonna be shaped.
And that was the original pu, public notice process? Is you got notice of an application, not quite always the, the, the process, but you got notice of the application when it was, like, you'd get a notice of an application before it was actually, made it to the office. And that caused confusion with the public, because it's like, why am I getting this notice? It doesn't tell me when the public hearing is. And we, we've just noticed, that's why the code got changed to notice when the public hearing is. But that's something-
But that was also before signs were possibly being posted, and, right? You know, in other words, you know, well, anyway, I've made my case, it's up to the condition.
Absolutely. So Alex pointed out, I need to tweak a few things, and then this section, I need this to match in the conditional use section of the code, and the subdivision section of the code, because I pulled it out, and I, I just want to make sure all the public notice requirements in the code are the same public notice requirements throughout all of the code. So I think the word, Alex brought, the conditional needs to come out, because that's where I copied it from. I apologize for not catching that.
Okay, also, we're going over our two-hour time limit?
Yes.
So what's the pleasure of the commission? Shall we continue?
Well, I do know that we have some public comment that, that needs, that, that people have waited patiently for. Do we want to move to public comment?
Well, let's, let's finish this one.
Yes, please.
I was gonna say that, yeah, I mean, my thought would be to finish this.
And then move on to, to subcommitting the note right to public comment.
Well, you need to vote to go to subcommittees.
All right, we'll do that.
Okay. But if you want to finish this item first, just tell me, how would you like to proceed? And I can make this happen.
And add an additional half an hour on, and then, and then adjourn, that would be my, my-
All right, I do to, move to extend the meeting for a half hour from, that'll be nine ten.
Okay.
I, I second that emotion.
Here, here you go, and I'll go first.
Maybe 15 minutes.
I, I yield to my younger colony.
Okay, is there a vote?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Mary Linda was a yes.
Yes.
Okay, so.
Six to zero.
Are we good on this?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to accept the staff recommendation on the conditional use. Hearing, timing, and notice.
So you're okay with changing the public notice? And then we'll make that a recommendation to Mayor and Council, and I'll fix those little things.
Yeah, although, to Tim's point, I think, to Tim's point, I think a template makes a lot of sense for that letter. If all those details are gonna be included in each letter, and you want to standardize, as you said, you want to standardize, make sure it's right, right? So a template really makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, that can be a policy, that we just have it as, we send them a template, and it can include a bunch of things.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Jeanette, we, we are, the documentation, that was page two, three, and two, four, or are we also going over?
I think you're working on the public notice requirement.
This one?
Yep, that one.
We are not tackling this one yet, right?
I need to take a look, sorry, I need to get-
170 dash nine, we're not dealing with 19794.
Because I fixed 1974 to match the 170, but the other, no, we're not talking about that one yet.
Oh, not yet, okay.
We're just talking about 170.
Okay.
All right, do you need a motion for that, or are you just, we do?
Yes.
Just before we go there, there are a few typos.
Yeah. Yeah, that's fine. Again, this is just a draft for discussion purposes to-
All right, I make a motion to approve the staff recommendation on conditional use timing and notice.
Is there a second?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, and now-
You just made a motion on D four, but you didn't make a motion on D three. D three is the public notice changes, D four was the conditional use and-
Oh.
So, D four is the same public notice as one seventy, but conditional uses are only valid for one year, and you have to come back and start it all over again. Conditional uses run with the land. Unless you make it a condition of approval that you wanna see it back on a yearly basis, that's okay. I'm jumping ahead a little, I got you covered. Staffs are recommending that there's no time limit unless it's a condition of approval with a conditional use. Because the cell tower in the city of Lewis has to come back every year for renewal because it's a conditional use. I'm not aware of anybody wanting to take the cell tower down, but the cell tower is going to run with the land, once that use ceases. So, and BB has several uses.
That's, I was just gonna ask if you can give us more examples.
BB has several uses, once that use ceases, the conditional use expires. But conditional uses run with the land, but the way the code is written right now, you have to come back every year and get reapproval. And it seems, and I've never had an issue in five years with either of them. So I think that's why staff is suggesting make that go away. Now, if there's conditional use that ever comes before you, and you think, I wanna review this in a year, see how it's going, I think that's where you place that condition on it, and you can do that. But I think every conditional use having an annual renewal is, is time-consuming of not just staff, but of the council's time and the applicant's time. It's, again, a good example, is I don't see a cell tower being removed. Well, at least I wouldn't want the public to let me know how they feel about it if the conditional use is not renewed and the cell service dwindles.
And, and so just to clarify this, if the parcel, if the parcel has a conditional use, and it is sold, that is the end of the conditional use.
Conditional use runs with the land.
Runs with the land.
So if I have a, if I have a cell tower on my property, and I sell it to you, that cell tower is still valid, cause it runs with the land. Now, if I have, if I was, I have an office in a residential house, and I stop using that office in that residential house, and I turn it back to residential, that conditional use has ceased, and it has to comply with being the use of the underlying zone. So that's what, that's, that, that change is doing, is just getting rid of the, BB has to come back multiple times a year because of when their conditional uses were approved, and get approvals for some of the things they're doing. Like, the foundation building is a residential, is a residential zone in a residential house, and they're using it as an office, and they come back every year and get approval for that. And I'm tracking them down, our staff is tracking them down to make sure we get that renewal back, and we get it on time.
So what would be the motion to, to streamline this and to eliminate that requirement?
So technically, you already made that motion and voted on it?
Yeah.
But I think what you might wanna do is, if you would like to, and-
Well, let me just go ahead and just say, why don't we just say-
D three and D four at the same time that you're recommending approval of both of them, regarding the public notice requirements and the, the timing of the conditional use for that.
So we're recommending approval of both motions?
I have one question.
Is there a fee for renewing the conditional use?
There is not.
Okay, then there's, then, I was gonna say, we, we don't wanna waive the fees.
There's no conditional use fee at the moment.
Thank you, Ms. Weber.
So, but yes, there was a fee, yeah. So I would suggest maybe recommending approval of items D two and D three, as you have discussed.
D three, D three and four.
D three and D four, I'm sorry.
Yes, there we go.
D three and D four.
All right, recommend approval of D three and D four.
I have a question on the last-
I'll second that.
Item, sorry, on one ninety seven ninety eight B expiration, and the definition of abandonment. You, you mentioned that there is abandonment if there's no activity for a continuous period of two years. I'm wondering, from a practical point of view, how do you calculate the starting point of the two years? After a while, say, oh, that's been quite a while that no work has taken place here, but how can you set up, really establish the two years? Do you have some sort of monitoring system?
So the good thing is, we have business licenses that you have to renew. So if you haven't gotten a business license for two years, you haven't been there.
Okay.
And we also, code enforcement goes out, and the building inspectors go out, and it's like, if they don't notice something, they'll, they'll mark that, and then we can track. Or if a property's been sold, cause sometimes conditional uses change once a property has been sold. Not all the time, but it can. So we do have some mechanisms. It's not a perfect system, it's just like the non-conforming section of the code, which this is, this is based on. But typically, for like, a rental license or a business license, that, those are our triggers for how you're using a property.
Thank you for this explanation.
You're welcome.
Okay, let's proceed with the motion.
You have a second?
Is there a second?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Mary Linda was also a yes. Okay, thank you very much.
I just wanna comment that one of the things council has requested of city managers, particularly our city planner, is to identify, as she has done here, areas of code, just as you all been doing definitions, we've also been asking her, because she sees these things over and over again, let's get things cleaned up. My recommendation in future agendas, is there grouped as one item, okay, where it says clarification of code? So then you guys know, this isn't like brand-new business, this is all under that envelope. Doesn't mean you don't, you can't approve or disapprove each one, but you understand the context of it.
Right.
Okay, I think it'll just be clear.
Cluster them.
Yeah, cluster them together in the agenda.
I'll create a new little-
And that will help for the public to know.
Code clarification.
Right, it's not giant policy, it's, we're just cleaning up, we're just becoming more efficient. But thank you, Commissioner Eval, as the chair of finance, that you did ask the question about fees.
No waiving of fees.
No waiving of fees.
Why isn't there a fee?
Okay.
Well, yeah, that's the other question.
Why can't we add a fee?
Yeah, right, right, right.
I think in the interest of time, we'll move to public comment now, so that our audience doesn't have to wait for the end of the agenda.
Great.
Good evening, my name is George Plummer. I've lived in the area for several years, and our family's had businesses that have been in the area for several years.
We're just gonna move the mic over for you a little bit?
Oh, yes.
Thank you so much.
We have had our businesses here in the area for several years, and our family has the ground out there that's next to the Warrington property. And all I wanna do is go on record saying that we are not interested in selling any piece of that ground for any connectivity road. That's all I wanna say, and that's it. If you have any questions of me about that, that's, where's that? Because of the proposal that we had for a section of the ground that was gonna go on our property is not viable in any sense of the word. It goes between two businesses, one is Dr. Pete's, and the other is our residence, and the road that rides between is probably about forty feet wide, and that's where they had proposed to put a connectivity road onto King's Highway from Savannah Road. So, with that being said, we just wanna go on record saying we are not interested in selling any of the property at any time, and we have no plans for any development at this time. It's gonna remain as it is, piece of farm ground.
Understand.
That's all I have to say, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Plummer, I, I have a question. First of all, thank you for coming tonight, I would greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, folks, enjoyed hearing what you had to say tonight, very informative.
The question that I have is, is, is your, where the, the development would go, the new development, how close is that to your property? And how would that-
Right there on the line.
How would that impact your property?
Well, as long as there's no road going across our property, it's not gonna impact it.
Okay.
Because we still use it as farm ground.
Great.
It's leased every year, you know, to raise crops, and that's it. And we do have a city water line going through there that we gave them permission to put through, that runs through that property over to Savannah Road.
Right.
So that's, that's my only concern, that we go on record that you know that we are not interested in selling any of it or having it used for a connectivity purpose for that road.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Plummer, may I ask you a question, too?
Yes, sure.
Thank you again for attending. What is your street address, please?
It is, it's on King's Ha- my personal address?
Well, the, the property there-
Property is on King's Highway.
Okay, and do you have a house number there?
I believe it's eight twenty six.
Eight twenty six?
I believe so, yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, connects to both Savannah Road and King's Highway.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There is somebody online, put their hand up.
Hello?
Yes. Hello, could you identify yourself and give us your address?
Yes, it's Gail Van Gilder, five sixteen East Cape Shore Street in Lewis.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to mention that there were a number of statements made tonight regarding possible changes made or conditions put on the Overfall Preserve and Dutchman's Harvest and the Lodge properties, separating the Lodge off and not allowing them to cut through. And I just feel like there's possibly information that the commission doesn't have, because the public record has been closed, and I hope that you will open it up to public comment so that information can be gotten to the commission. And, for example, I don't know how you can talk about separating off the Lodge and not allowing them to cut through when there's already a condition on the already approved Dutchman's Harvest that allows that to happen. And so, I just don't wanna see you go down a path of trying to make recommendations without having perhaps a good handle on details like that. And also, agreements were made, apparently, between the Lodge, or the owner of Dutchman's and Overfalls to allow that thirty percent of the traffic from Overfalls to cut through. And these conditions, these, these agreements were made in order for other things to happen, but, and it's kind of hard to go backwards, as was being suggested tonight, and trying to cut it, cut pieces of it off and not allow cut-throughs, so where agreements have already been made to do that. So, perhaps outside of city council, and they are not written anywhere that I know of or documented, but I think that there's information that you need to have. And so, will you allow public comment before you have your meeting that was scheduled to come up with conditions and so forth? Because I, I think this problem is larger than conditions, and I think we need to get all the information on the table.
Oh, I, I think we're running out of time. We're, we would have to schedule a public meeting to receive new information.
So there will be a public hearing before mayor and council, and anyone's welcome to submit comments at that point. As of now, the planning commission has not scheduled another public hearing. There will be a public meeting, which is different, that it's happening in a couple weeks.
But you're going to be making recommendations to the council that you say you want to get right, and make sure that you get this right because it's so important, but you need to have information that I have not been able to get to you.
Thank you for your comments. The public record for the planning commission has closed. Any new information can be submitted to staff, and staff will make sure that goes to the mayor and council as part of the public record for the mayor and city council.
Ah, is that correct? Oh, but that will only go to mayor and city council, it won't go to the planning commission?
Correct, because their record is closed. But we thank you, and I look forward to receiving any new and additional information you want to provide from the mayor and council public hearing.
Thank you.
So for clarification- That is, unless we did schedule another public hearing on this, which we could do, and just to be clear, I'm just, I'm just throwing this out there as an option.
Yeah.
Unless, cause we have, we would have to notice that within fifteen days, is that correct? So it would have to be fifteen days that we would have to give notice, so we'd have to schedule it basically tonight to have another public hearing. And, and then that could then provide additional information that would be, admissible is not the right word, that's-
Taking new evidence, that would be the basis for it.
We could take into account during our consideration of the, that we've already scheduled on the twenty ninth, or whenever that date is.
And just for everybody's understanding, there's always information that comes in after a planning commission recommendation that goes to mayor and council, and that's just what happens. People find new information. You made a recommendation based on the best information that you have before you, that was provided by the resources you have asked for, and all of that, so you are making the best, the best decision based on the information that you have. The applicant may even at the next, come up with different things and make that. So you have your record, and your record is based on the information that has been provided. You have a complete record, based on, again, the questions that were asked, the public comments that were provided, but people can provide additional information to mayor and council.
Can I just comment, though? I just, I, I, it's not that I, what you said is accurate, a hundred percent, it's just that council relies on the talent and the focus of this commission. And because, as you started this with language of, this is at the gateway, this is a critical development, even tonight's comment by Mr. Plummer, I think, is, is a statement that you cannot incorporate-
Correct.
-into your decision-making.
Correct.
And yet, we're all here as humans and heard it, thank you, Mr. Plummer, for coming to, to take your time, and now we have a public person who's saying she's got information. So I guess what I would say is, council, there's always stuff that comes-
Always.
But through your public comment, you just heard two public comments that I would like you to consider, so that I know you've considered it-
Well, you know-
Before we have to consider, right?
To your point, I mean, they speak directly to the whole connectivity issue we were just bringing up.
Exactly, yeah.
Right, the, the biggest questions we have right now are ahead, all the definitions of connectivity, blah, 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 whatever it may be. And these two comments, both together, just said, well, what you have on the record may be not enough.
Right.
So now, we should think about a public hearing, a quick public hearing, to get all this information on the record, get Mr. Plummer's comments on the record.
Yeah, and maybe it's a public hearing, you know, sometimes, and I know when I sit on planning commission, we use those hearings and then we ask questions, maybe it's just straight public comment, and then you say, thank you, and then you have your meeting where you're deliberating. So it's, it's short and it's brief, but I don't know, I just feel like you got some pieces of information today that, that you didn't have before, not your fault, no one's fault?
No one's fault, but that is also why there's two public hearings.
I understand that, but as a commission, as a commissioner, they have a role, and we as a council-
And I understand that, and I respect that, absolutely.
I support what-
I just don't know when you're gonna be able to schedule a public hearing, and that's my problem at this point.
May I ask this question about that, please?
Yeah.
Cause I think one of the things that's driving the calendar here is that one hundred and twenty days-
Correct.
That I believe Mr. Alex spoke to. Given the fact that the commission is showing due diligence, they are making the effort to get this thing buttoned down, they're not playing around with this subject matter at all, they're working very hard towards, to wrap this thing up. Because the public record is so strong there, what they've demonstrated is so strong, are, is there any allowance for them to extend beyond one hundred and twenty days?
So, the council, the commission's obviously acting in good faith here. So the Council, the Commission's obviously acting in good faith here, you know, trying to get to a resolution as quickly as possible. I think the safest approach would be to stick to the one twenty. It's possible to go beyond that, but I would not recommend it.
I would also just add, now, we're not asking for this as, on a regular basis, but just as Henlopen was sent back to us, if there is new information presented, I believe Mayor and City Council always have that option.
I would remain.
Whether it's to clarify conditions or whether it's because more, if there's compelling information that we should be considering and you feel you want our input on it or our conditions in reaction to it, I think it's reasonable to think that would be an option this time too.
And during your discussion, if there's a question for clarification that staff or Alex can answer, or staff can answer, you can ask that because that information's already in the record, we're just providing clarification. So that can happen on the twenty-ninth, absolutely. If there's a question you need answered, we can provide that information.
Okay.
So I think you're still in public comment and I believe there's somebody who would like to give some public comment. Again, please be aware, if it's related to the application, it cannot be considered. Thank you.
I have a procedural question. Is it permissible to?
Alan, please introduce yourself.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Alan Roth, four thirty-seven King's Highway. I have a procedural question. Is it permissible at this point to reopen the written public comment period until the day before your special meet, before your special meeting?
The Commission could do that if they want to.
So that it would be possible for Mr. Plummer and Ms. Van Gelder to submit in writing whatever material they want prior to?
Well, it opens it up to everybody being able to submit.
Yes, under, understood.
Writing.
So the material that was previously being discussed could be submitted and considered?
Yeah, it seems like it meets your time limit.
Okay, so if you're gonna do that, the record needs to, if you're gonna open it, the written record as of today, then it needs to close on the twenty-fourth, so I have time to collate it and get it back to you for the twenty-ninth. But I think, I can divert to Alex because it's still opening the public record.
But it's a public written record.
Written, it's a public record. Opening the public record but not holding a new public hearing.
That's, that's what I was asking.
Yep, you can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Because I need to let the applicant know of that. Yeah.
So.
Because they have since left because we are now off the agenda. So.
So my only question on that one is, we have to let Mr. Plummer and, I'm sorry, I didn't catch the woman's name who spoke.
Ms. Van Gelder.
Ms. Van Gelder, know that we need some written statements by next date to put their positions on the record, right?
Well, is Ms. Van Gelder still online? Yes, so she, hopefully she heard.
I'm also dropping her.
I can.
No, no, you're not, no, you're not.
No, I can do that.
No, no, please do not do that.
Okay.
Please do not do that.
I was just wanting to know that.
No, no, no.
Never mind.
No, no. No, no.
I'm always helping.
I like that.
Lou will put out a notice tomorrow on the website that written record will be accepted for this application until three-thirty Friday, January twenty-fourth, because that way it gives me time, I'm not having to sit at my desk until four o'clock because somebody literally will submit at three-fifty-nine. So we will rewrite the written record only. We will open up the public comment, that, the form that's online, or they can submit it directly to myself and then we will make sure it gets to.
Disseminate it.
Disseminate it, so.
And the developer?
I do need a motion to reopen the public written record until three-thirty Friday, January twenty-fourth.
Janelle, we just want to make sure, I mean, the developer may be listening in, but because the developer left when he heard your decision not to have one?
We will be emailing the developer.
Okay, I want to make sure everybody knows.
Yeah, no, that was the side conversation, I have to let the developer know.
Good, everybody has to.
And that written record that you opened now, it would allow him, the developer, to also?
Absolutely, yes. And anyone in the public, including the developer, will have that opportunity to do that.
Good.
So I just need a motion?
I, I, I make a motion that we reopen the record.
The written record.
The written record for consideration of the Overfalls development for, until January twenty-fourth.
And if you could just state the reason for doing that.
And, and the reason is to allow new information, which is, any new information, to, to be considered when we, when we.
Discuss and put in for makes it.
Discuss our, and make our final recommendations for Mayor and City Council on, on the, on January twenty-ninth.
Second?
A second.
A second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who seconded that? Yes.
What was that?
I was just trying to write down who seconded it, but that's okay. And Mary Linda was in favor? Thank you. Okay, you are still technically in public comment?
Okay, yes, any other public comment?
There is a hand up online.
Okay.
Ask him to mute, unmute.
Unmute yourself and please identify yourself.
Oh, yeah, that was Gail Van Gelder. I was just trying to let you know that I was still here when you were asking.
Thank you.
And I would, and I do want to thank you, so that, that will be very helpful.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? No, okay. Anyone in the audience wish to speak? Okay.
Reports?
Are we gonna go to the next item?
You have three minutes.
Yes.
Do you want to do the reports?
But to the fast.
Hold on, many reports?
Well, we could knock out the open space, I think, I don't know.
I don't think so.
Open Space Subcommittee, they're done, I knew need minutes. The public hearing got postponed due to the snow, it has been rescheduled for February thirteenth, for, or twen-, February twelfth. It's been rescheduled. So that public hearing before Mayor Council has been rescheduled for the Open Space ordinance.
So we don't need, we don't need to do that to decide?
It is February twelfth.
So we don't need to address? So D five, we don't have to address?
What's D five? Oh, no, no. D five, that's, Mayor Council wants you to look at the uses in the open space zone. I'll come up with ideas next time, it's just on there for a reminder that.
In the big open space, not the little open space.
Yeah, the, I'm sorry, yes, I was thinking little open space.
I know, big open space.
The big letter O, big letter S, open space zoning classification. Mayor Council's asked you to take a look at the permitted uses within that zoning district to see if it's permitted because.
If it's permitted, and also just to clarify, are we starting to fill up our open space with permitted?
Some of them are weird.
Yes, and so, think of it, that's what we're asking you to look at.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, we're filling up.
You're asking us to tighten up that code, right?
To tighten up the code so that what we don't have is fill up all of our green open space with.
Technically, you skipped this item.
Right, right.
And moved straight to the Subcommittee's, that's why.
Yeah.
The motion to extend to nine ten was to go to just the Subcommittee Committee, so, sorry, that's why I went back to little O, little S.
Okay, so was that D five?
Yes.
D five, D five.
We're done with D five.
Yeah, you're done with all the new business, you were moving on to.
Get great.
Okay, I, the next item is the com.
Will that be considered at another meeting?
Yeah, you're skipping the comp plan.
They're, they're moving D five to another meeting.
The motion to, to extend the me, meeting skipped everything except for the reports and the public comment.
Correct, so we do not.
Yes, so you're not.
Okay.
Reports, is that correct?
Correct.
And comp plan talk.
You're not doing D five, comp plan talk, you're going right to committee report.
All right, I, I do want to say something about the comp plan though, that we probably need to have a separate meeting on that to, to kick it off.
Yes.
Because we, we're kicking it down the road here and, and pretty soon we're gonna get in trouble.
Well, if somebody want, you did ask to, to do a request for information and nobody got me ideas for information, so if somebody wants to give me that, then I can put some RFI out to get ideas of what you're looking for, for the comprehensive plan. That was from November.
Request from information from who?
On what, from the Planning Commission as to what they're looking for in the comprehensive plan for ideas and concepts and, we'll talk about it at, at another meeting.
Yeah, I, I think we need to organize amongst ourselves.
You do need to organize before you do.
You're not organized amongst yourselves.
No, we have to have a public.
We're not allowed to.
In the public hearing, yes, in the public, but, you know, before we.
We want a world-class comprehensive.
No more than two, just one given by the person.
Let's not do that right now. So, committee reports.
All right. Environmental Subcommittee, we, we didn't meet because of the storm.
Correct.
So we meet next week, I think. Home occupation Subcommittee?
Yeah, we had a meeting canceled because of the storm, believe it or not. Yeah, I couldn't believe it either. So, but we're, we're making progress, we have a scheduled hearing, a meeting on the third of February, okay? Any luck, any luck, we may be able to present to this Council Commission the February meeting, that's my goal, okay? It'll hap, it'll depend on what happens at the February third, discussion with, between Rich and Bill and I, okay? But.
What time is our meeting at?
Uh, I think it's eleven.
Yeah, your meetings are at eleven.
So anyway, so we're, we're making progress, so moving along.
Kevin, excuse me, what was the date of your next meeting?
February third.
Monday.
Thank you.
At eleven.
That'll be at Mayor's.
Yeah, at the Mayor's.
At Chamber.
At the Chamber, I think.
Council Chambers.
Okay, H Park update?
This is actually going to be the first H Park update in a lot of years, I guess. I can honestly say there's a lot of exciting things going on at H Park right now. Number one, the goal of H Park, you know, or our job is to protect the historic district homes following the Secretary of, Secretary of the Interior's standards. And for many years, there was this little antiquated-looking pamphlet that people were giving, and when I tell you antiquated, I mean, it looked like a Hojo's menu from nineteen seventy-eight. It was, it was really antiquated. So what we have found there, I'm glad that I am on both and I'm, I'm proud to represent a, on the Planning Commission, is that the same issues that we have here are the same issues that they have there and that we are seeing fewer applicants who want to come in and work within the suggested guidelines. And more applicants who want to come in and maximize their investment, make their hearts, houses much larger, many requests for materials that are not appropriate for the historic district and for this, you know, or follow the Secretary of the Interior's guidelines. So we have some new members, Pete Mallon, Kevin Mallinson is, is leading, is doing all the organization and drafting, he's up to sixty pages now on the new, on the new standards. And what we found was that much more so than our old subdivision code, it was pretty loose. It's very loose and very much open to interpretation. And we have to, we're starting now to go back even more to the interior standards and look at the compatibility with neighborhood and the size and the massing of the homes in the historic district. So when these codes are, when the code is updated, there, actually the standards and guidelines, we're hoping to include all of those issues because we need to. There are very few empty lots, but there are some houses perhaps in danger of losing and if people can tear down, they will. So we are going to face that again and we just need to be very clear. But we need to be very clear on new construction and we recently denied a very large home that, where a very modest, modest, modest home stood and we still, it's, you know, returning to us, but we denied the original plan. So that, that's pretty much it. It's a lot of looking at, do your windows look good? Can you replace? Examples, the last meeting, we had an applicant who wanted to replace a very, very worn cedar roof that actually was so bad that they could not get a mortgage and had to do a cash buy of the home with a metal roof. And the Commission, you know, voted to make, you know, go like with like and that's what we're trying to do. So.
Thank you. Okay, Alex?
Just very quickly, the carriage houses at Cape Henlopen, which we heard today, their request, Mayor and City Council are hearing that request at a public hearing February third, so just FYI on that, and at that same public hearing, the lighting recommendations will be discussed.
Great. Okay, Barbara?
I'll spare you, nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Just one item, Council on Monday wants to send to you all for you to look at whether your view on gates across roads for new communities, there's nothing in the ordinance that, pardon me?
I was gonna do it under code clarification.
Okay, okay, so we just want you to address it so that we have something to fall back on rather than individual opinions. Thank you. Great. Okay, Tim?
No, I.
Same thing.
And, and I would say for anyone who did not watch the last Council meeting, to at least tune into that, it was the last item or close to the end of the meeting.
Okay, Janelle?
The gate discussion.
They covered it all.
Okay.
Yeah.
BPW, anything?
Question, Janelle?
Okay.
Us, Ex officio, can we get a copy of the draft conditions?
Okay. See me in a minute.
Okay, I think that's it for the agenda.
Make a motion, do adjourn.
I'd second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hardly endorse that.